Good morning and welcome to the August 23rd, 2024 special meeting of the Board of Regents. The first item is roll call. Carrie, can you please take role?
Chair Carvalho.
Here.
Vice Chair Downs.
Here.
Regent Ariscotta.
Here.
Regent Boylan.
Aye.
Regent Brager.
Here.
Regent Brooks.
Here.
Regent Brown. Regent Cruz Crawford.
Here.
Regent Del Carlo.
Here.
Regent Goodman.
Here.
Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Perkins. Regent Tarkanian. You do have a quorum present.
Thank you. I will ask Regent Brager to lead us in the pledge. Before beginning, we take a moment to recognize that here in Nevada, we stand on the land of the Wachishu, Wacho, Numu, Northern Paiute, Nui, Western Shoshone, and Nuu, Southern Paiute. We take a moment to recognize and honor their stewardship that continues into today. With this recognition, we state an intention to rightfully include their voice and respect them as the 27 sovereign tribal nations of Nevada. I will now move to agenda item number one, public comment. For those who would like to call in and offer public comment, please dial 669-444-9171 and enter meeting ID 92849445069 and pass code 555555. Is there any public comment at GBC?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the system office in Reno?
Yes, sir, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Please state and spell your last name and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. I'm Jim New, N-E-W, from the Nevada Faculty Alliance. Now, while the start of a new semester is full of anticipation for all faculty as their students return to campus, this year, there is an element of anxiety at some of our institutions over the likelihood of continued campus demonstrations and the administrative responses to them. While the safety of everyone on our campus communities is the top priority, it must not be excessive nor can it infringe on the essential rights of free speech and academic freedom that are the hallmark of the American higher education system. About 250 years ago, Benjamin Franklin said, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither." As such, the NFA endorses the principles set forth in the AAUP statement entitled,[209.69][209.72]"In Defense of the Right to Free Speech and Peaceful Protest on University Campuses." It is the right of every member of our campus communities to engage in responsible and peaceful protest. We urge all faculty members to promote calm, thoughtful, and respectful dialogue with their students, coworkers, and the broader community about the complexities surrounding the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Nevertheless, NFA will vigorously defend any faculty members who are targeted or accused of violating unjust principles. We urge the campus administrations and this board to exercise caution and restraint when responding to these demonstrations and provide the security we need without infringing on our essential liberties. Thank you.
Good morning, Kent Ervin, E-R-V-I-N, Nevada Faculty Alliance. We will listen to the presentation on the budget request and agenda item four with great interest. It is good news that the initial request through the governor's finance office provides a minimum of 80% funding for the past cost of living adjustments and adjusts the dollar value per weighted student credit hour for inflation. That represents new budgetary policy for more stable and sustainable funding. Hopefully, both the governor and the legislature will adopt those requests. Other good news is that yesterday, the interim education committee approved a bill draft request regarding fee waivers, potentially including provisions for funding. The Committee on Higher Education Funding submitted its final report recently. The committee fulfilled the chancellor's charge to revise the funding formula with no new funding. The recommendation adds new formula components to address the needs of underrepresented and Pell Grant students and treat performance factors with real teeth while reducing the allocation based on weighted student credit hours. Without additional funding, however, this new formula merely transfers funds from some institutions to others. The only way the new formula will be a true success is if the funding made of, is if new funding is made available for the new student-based and outcome-based components. To avoid a complete failure, there needs to be full-hold harmless funding. That is the serious challenge that ENSI faces in the next budget cycle. A unified appeal to the legislature from all of the ENSI community is needed. During the budget process, the NFA will work with ENSI and the institutions to make the case for adequate and equitable funding of all of our colleges and universities for all faculty and students. Thank you. That's all from Reno.
Thank you. Is there any public comment here in Las Vegas?
How you doing? Patrick Villa, V-I-L-L-A. I'm the past faculty senate chair at CSN, and I would like to just spend a minute thanking the board for finding an acting president for CSN after a year-plus of looking for new leadership. I've been here for 20, I'm on my 21st year at CSN, and for the first time, I can honestly say the faculty have come together, the staff were very happy with what we've been hearing, the changes that have been made, the progress we've made. Just overdue, years overdue of things, and I have people who normally disagree on everything just because they hate each other, but they're both coming to me together and saying, "We love the changes that have happened over only two months under Dr. Kibler." So, I thank you for that. I hope that when you find our permanent president, you also empower him or her and give them, find somebody similar or at least close to that. So, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Yates. I heard someone say state and spell your name, so A-N-D-R-E-W-Y-A-T-E-S. I am a former student at the UNLV William S. Boyd School of Law, and I'm now a graduate. I'm here to provide public comment in support of the law school's legislative priority request as part of item 28, the biennium operating budget. So, I'm here to speak in support of the request to help the Thomas &amp; Mack Legal Clinic and student success initiatives. I was a member of the Poverty Law and Policy Clinic, which is a Thomas &amp; Mack clinic at the William S. Boyd School of Law. It provided me with invaluable experiential education, and it also provided free, the clinic also provides free legal services to community members. In the Poverty Law and Policy Clinic, I was able to gain experience in working with both students, professors, or with students, professors, and community members, as well as private organizations and government entities to address their legal needs. And enhancing the law school's base budget for the clinic will allow more opportunities for students like me to gain experiences like I had. I also want to briefly talk about student success initiatives, particularly law school scholarships for bar exam study. I was fortunate enough that my family was able to support me and I did not have to work during my 10 weeks of studying for the bar exam after graduating from school. But many students aren't so fortunate, and so enhancing the budget in order to provide for some of these students to have the funding that they need to get through the exam and start their careers to serve the community would greatly enhance the impact that the school has on the state. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chase Christensen, C-H-R-I-S-T-E-N-S-E-N. Much like Mr. Yates, before me, I also am a graduate of Boyd School of Law at UNLV. I was also a member of the Survivor Advocacy and Representation Clinic at the School of Law, and I am here in support of item number 28, the law school's legislative priority request for their biennium operating budget. To echo much of the points that Mr. Yates said, the clinic, and increasing its funding to an amount, allows students to have real-world practice and is an important and integral part of preparing for the practice of law in this community. It also gets students out there in the field and gets them much more used to the community and to the courtroom and courthouses that they'll inhabit one day. In addition, the Student Success Initiative paves the way for students who might not have as much of a chance to succeed in an arena where they might not because of outside factors. The enhancements for Student Success Initiatives will provide additional funding for student scholarships, including a $5,000 stipend, which is incredibly important to allowing them to study for longer, to allowing them to have a greater chance of passing the bar the first time, and hopefully getting out there in the field earlier. So, with all that, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Good morning. My name is Blanca Peña, and I am an incoming to L at the William S. Boyd School of Law. Much like my peers, I'm here in support of item 28, the priority request for the biennium operating budget. As a law student, I have witnessed firsthand the profound impact that the Thomas &amp; Mack Legal Clinic has both on students and the community. This past summer, I had the privilege of working as a fellow at the UNLV Immigration Clinic, where I represented unaccompanied children and also submitted an opening brief and a reply to the Ninth Circuit on behalf of a detainee facing deportation proceedings. Participating in the clinic not only allows us students to apply the knowledge that we've gained in the classroom to real-world situations, but it also provides critical legal services to members of our community who might otherwise have no access to legal representation. The experiential learning that the clinic offers is invaluable, and it is a cornerstone of our legal education. The budget enhancement for Student Success Initiatives is equally important. Law school is rigorous, and the financial burden can be overwhelming, especially when it comes to preparing for the bar exam, an endeavor that can cost students thousands of dollars. Data shows that students who can dedicate themselves full-time to bar exam preparation have a much bigger pass rate, or much higher pass rate, which directly correlates to their ability to become licensed attorneys. The proposed funding for bar exam scholarships would alleviate some of this pressure, allowing students to focus on their studies and ultimately succeed in passing the bar. In conclusion, I strongly urge this board to approve the proposed budget enhancements for the Thomas &amp; Mack Legal Clinic, as well as the Student Success Initiatives. Thank you.
Okay, Regent McMichael?
Good morning. Regent Donald McMichael, M-C-M-I-C-H-A-E-L. I'm coming before this morning to speak about a matter that is very important to me, one that everyone will learn about later this afternoon, and it regards whether or not we, as a board, follow the proper procedures for removing a chair or vice chair from their position on a standing committee. I've already been informed that such information had to be reduced to information only, which I didn't agree to, but had to succumb to in order to at least have something on the agenda for this afternoon. I want to let it be known that I believe that if we do not open such discussions of importance as such as removal of members from a standing committee, this information should be done in open, not in secret. If anyone believes that we are a secretive body, I will dispel that this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment here in Las Vegas, is there any public comment on the phone? Thank you. Moving on to item number two, consent. Oh, I'm sorry. Regent Boylan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm requesting that we move items seven and eight to the first two items to be presented at this board meeting, please. And that's a request. That's up to you.
Thank you. I do appreciate your request. I think it's important to get the other information to us first, as presidents are here, and I don't know if they are able to stay for the whole time. This is the Friday before classes begin, so I'd like to give them the opportunity to be here while we discuss the budget or Title IX before we get to the others. But I do appreciate the request. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
So, we'll move on to item number two, consent items.
Point of order.
For that statement to be true, we would have to ask the presidents whether or not they have other engagements that they need to go to that would preclude us from moving item seven and eight to position one and two.
Regent McMichael, with all due respect, as the chair, I do have the authority to say what items come before others, and I don't think it's necessary that we ask the presidents.
But you did make that statement, so I would like to ask whether or not the presidents, in fact, would mind having this item moved to the front because of the importance of it.
Regent McMichael, we are going to go on with consent items, item number two. Thank you. So, consent items will be considered together and acted on in one motion unless an item is removed to be considered separately by the Board of Regents. Are there any questions, comments, or a motion to approve? Madam Chair?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Thank you. So, I have a motion by Vice Chair Downs and a second from Regent Del Carlo. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Regent Perkins, did you have something?
Actually, actually, yes, I did, but it was about number two B. I just wanted to go over like the points that were changed, like just a brief overview of the bullet points of the items that were changed from previous, but it's already been voted on and approved, so let's move on.
Okay, thank you. Item number three, handbook and code revisions, policy against unlawful discriminations and harassment complaint procedures. And for this item, I will open the Florida Chief Human Resources Officer, Eric Gilliland.
I got it on the first time. Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Chair Carvalho. Pleased to be here. For the record, Eric Gilliland, ENSI Chief Human Resources Officer. Find a spot for my drink. Glad to be here, finally. We had hoped to bring this to you all before, to an earlier meeting. Given the size and the complexity associated with this, we're here today, but I'm excited to be here. Rather than go through all of the individual changes that have occurred, which are many, what I'd like to do is just kind of go over a summary of how we got here, what are some of the new pieces that have changed since the previous regulations, and then offer our recommendation to this board for your discussion and consideration. So, as I'm sure you all are aware, Title IX has been in the news for several months now, primarily because the Department of Education released the, what we're going to call the 2024 regulations, to replace the 2020 regulations. It's obviously very important that, as a system, we adhere to Title IX, that we remain compliant with Title IX, not only because it's the law of the land, but also because it provides the protection and support to our students, faculty, staff, and visitors. So, how we arrived here today, again, the new regulations were released on April 19th with an August 1 implementation date, so they are already in effect for a majority of our campuses, majority of our campuses and majority of campuses across the country. You may have heard there's been injunctions that have been issued. I'll let, I don't see Linda, she snuck in behind me. Linda King is here as well if there's any questions around the legal aspects for the injunctions. But in any case, the regulations came to us through what is known as formal and extensive rulemaking process. So, through that process, the Department of Education released over 1,500 pages related to the regulations and offered analysis and public input comments, went through those comments, made revisions as they saw necessary, and released those regulations again on April 19th. Some of the key differences, and I think this is probably a little bit easier to do this rather than obviously go through the regulations, but we've seen three iterations of Title IX. It started with the pre-2020 regulations, moved to the 2020 regulations, now we're on to the 2024 regulations. So, essentially, when each administration has come in in Washington DC, we've seen shifts in the Title IX regulations. For a lot of it, some of it stays the same, some of it changes, things of that nature. So, what has changed in the 2024 regulations? The big one is that the definition has expanded of what sex-based discrimination is. So, that obviously includes harassment based on sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, marital status, pregnancy. What's new in these regulations is sexual orientation and gender identity. I will point out that while that is new into Title IX, that has already been protected under state law. So, in Nevada, it is illegal to discriminate against someone based on gender identity and expression. So, it is new to Title IX, however, it has applied in other Title VII, it applies there as well, so other civil rights laws. The harassment standard has been updated as well. I'm going to read this word for word because it's, the words are important here. So, "Under the current regulations, the conduct has to be unwelcome, sex-based, both subjectively and objectively offensive, and so severe or pervasive that it limits or denies participation in educational programs." The big change there from the 2020 regulations, there may be some other changes. The big change is, under 2020, it was severe and pervasive. And so, that may sound like a small change, but changing it from severe and to severe or broadens the definition to, for what conduct would apply to Title IX. Again, that definition also matches Title VII. So, there is some consistency across our civil rights laws that we're seeing at the federal level. The scope of jurisdiction is another major change. So, in the 2020 regulations, it essentially was conduct occurring within the United States and on our campuses. The broadening of the jurisdiction really goes back to, similar to how we were pre-2020, and that is that the conduct occurs on or off campus, or online, and ensuring that all students are protected regardless of where the conduct occurs. The bar for this is that the institution has to have substantial control over the context in which the conduct is occurring. So, convocation's a good example. We have full control over our convocation. So, if something were to occur, even though it may be off-campus, Title IX would still apply. The other big one with this is our international programs. Under the new regulations, if conduct is occurring, even though it's outside the US, the institution has substantial control over that program, Title IX would apply in that case. Institutional responsibilities, I wanted this in here. We've always had a responsibility to act swiftly and promptly to complaints and to resolve those where possible and to ensure that the conduct does not reoccur. But that is also a hallmark of these regulations as well. Supportive measures, so we are going to be required, and we are currently, we are required to offer supportive measures to both parties, and that's the big thing with Title IX, is it's equality to both, treating both parties the same, making sure that both the complainant, the one filing the complaint, the respondent, the one in which the complaint has been filed, have the same opportunities. So, in this case, they both have the same opportunities for supportive measures. One of the big pieces of this new regulation is that those supportive measures can now be challenged by either party. So, if a complainant is not happy with the supportive measures that are put in place, they can challenge that. That requires a separate, I'm going to use this word loosely, hearing, but it has to be resolved and a decision-maker has to be in place to be able to make the decision as to whether to uphold the supportive measures or to make changes to that. I'll talk a little bit about that around resources on our campuses for all these new roles that the new regulations are going to require. Grievance process, then, under the new regulations, we have far more flexibility. So, under the 2020 regulations, anything Title IX required a live hearing, which was the subject of much debate across the country for the chilling effect that can have on complaints. So, the new regulations do allow us to use what's known as the single investigator model, or a live hearing, for situations not involving students. If the complaint involves a student, it goes through the live hearing process, it still follows that path. Anything not involving a student, we can go to what is known as the single investigator model, which is essentially, you've got your investigator investigating the situation, making a determination and on the findings of that investigation, and making a determination as to the sanctions or discipline that should be issued. Flip my page here. And then complaint filing. This is, I'm saying these are all big things, right? These are all big things, big changes. Under the new regulations, an individual who experienced discrimination while participating in or attempting to participate in the institution's programs has the ability to file even if they are no longer affiliated with the institution. So, the overarching outcome of these changes are, quite frankly, going to be, we are expecting more cases, we are broadening the jurisdiction, we're broadening the definition, we're broadening the scope, we're opening the ability for former students or former, I guess, stakeholders to file a complaint if they feel that they experienced discrimination. So, at the end of the day, we are looking that our caseloads are going to increase. We had the opportunity through this process to pull together all the Title IX coordinators from all of the institutions. They all worked on these revisions along with our help from friends at Legal. We love our legal friends. One of the common themes was resources, and are we going to be able to fulfill our obligations under Title IX? I can tell you that we are under-resourced now, and so you may hear, and we do have folks from the campuses available, who said they were going to be here or be available online. They can definitely speak to that. I don't want to speak for them. Having been a former Title IX coordinator at two of our institutions, we are under-resourced. Many of our small institutions have one person who is responsible for Title IX, and oftentimes, that person's also responsible for overseeing HR for the campus. So, it's a heavy lift. We recognize that upfront. The policy draft that is before you with our recommendation attempts to streamline the process as much as possible, eliminate any unnecessary burdens on our campuses, but at the end of the day, those burdens will still be there. So, I just, that's my plug there for that. As a system, as our institutions, want to think about that, but I also want to share that we have a great group of Title IX coordinators who have come together and will continue to meet to help support one another and be available wherever we can on that.
Thank you. Mr. Gilliland, I believe that we have a question from Regent Ariscotta. Sure.
Mr. Gilliland, you're describing all the changes and the upgrades, but what you're not doing is providing us a little bit of guidance in regards to the compare and contrasting. We have a 74-page briefing paper, and you're kind of all over the place on this. Can you identify specifically on or of your examples where we are in the briefing paper, the previous policy, the current policy? Show us the difference in which you're talking about, because you are identifying, well, we upgraded this, we upgraded certain examples, but you're not showing us in the briefing paper, and you're not referring to any of the briefing paper that we received. So, a little bit of assistance to, not just for the board, but all in the crowd and all of the video watching online can actually follow what you're saying here.
Sure.
I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. So, I apologize. I do want to make clear, the changes that I was just going over- So I apologize, I do want to make clear, the, the, the changes that I was just going over, that was high level. That's what has changed with the Title IX regulations from 2020 to 24. Not necessarily what that looks like in terms of, of our policy, but I, but I am getting to that. I, I wanted this board to have a, an overview and a summary of all of the work that's been done leading up to why it's critical that we look at this. And then I'm happy to go through at whatever level of the, the policy revisions that, that are before the board, if, if that would be okay. I'm happy to do that now if we want to jump right to that.
Providing that clarity is helpful. But yes, it would be definitely beneficial and behoove the entire board if you could show the compare and contrast from previous policies to the updates that we have with the new Title IX laws and regulations.
Certainly, yeah. Yep, I can definitely do that. Thank you, Regent Aris Scott. I appreciate that. Um, one, one piece I did before we, we jump into that piece, I do want to highlight because there's, there's been a lot of discussion nationwide on this. So we talked about what the regulations do and the changes that have occurred. What, what doesn't it do? And the piece I just want to, want to highlight is the new regulations do not offer rules or guidance regarding eligibility for athletic teams. And the regulations actually state that in the regulations. So this is not intended to address the questions around LGBTQ and athletics. There is a separate set of regulations that the Department of Education has put together. So these regulations are not intended to address eligibility for athletic teams. So I wanted to just throw that out there upfront. It does protect sexual orientation and gender identity from the standpoint of non-athletics. But we anticipate at some point we may get those regulations on, on the athletic participation at a later date. So as I mentioned, the policy revisions that were put forth to this board were put together by all of the Title IX coordinators.
Mr. Gilliland, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think I have a question from Regent Goodman.
Sure.
Just before you continue on, so what does that exactly mean? Does that mean that the 2024 regs are, or the 2020 regs apply when it comes to athletics? Is that what that means with regard to athletics?
I think to the extent that they speak to athletics.
So we follow the 2020 regs in athletics?
I'm going to, I want to look back at Linda on that because that's actually a great question.
Linda King, for the record. Regent Goodman, that's correct. We would follow and Erica stated it properly. To the extent that those regulations or any other guidance and regulatory authority that's out there applies, there are, and we would go under what the current regulations regarding athletics are. So there is a proposed rule regarding athletics that has not been finalized. So in order for the Department of Education to be clear that that's not a part of these regulations, it gets very confusing. They've stated in the, in the 2024 regulations, by the way, don't panic everyone, we're still on hold with the athletic regulations. So that proposed rule received many thousands, hundreds of thousands of comments that the Department of Education is still weighing through.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, am I good to go? Perfect. So let's talk a little bit about the revisions that were made. So the, the primary revisions that were made would be to Title IV, Chapter VIII, Section 14. So that is our policy around unlawful discrimination and harassment. I'm going to do my best to try to go over what's changed. The, as you can imagine, the complexities with Title IX have led to complexities in our, in our policies. The primary, I guess I'll start, the, the primary change is going to be in terms of the, the actual grievance procedure and the fact that we now will have, will have two potential paths under this policy. And again, I want to point out, this policy addresses not just Title IX, but also non-Title IX harassment and discrimination. So really the, the primary difference is going to be the two paths of the grievance process. Path one would be for any of our non-sex-based discrimination complaints. So complaints alleging discrimination based on race, ethnicity, age, things of that nature, as well as sex-based discrimination involving faculty, staff, or visitors. So long as there's no students involved in that complaint, either as the complainant or as the respondent, it can go through that process. And that process resembles more of the single investigator model as opposed to the live hearings. So there's no live hearings. It would go through a, a formal investigation. The investigator will issue their, their findings. It will go to a decision maker to, to make the final determination on, on the process. Very similar to how we were pre 2020. Path two, path two is only going to be for Title IX, so sex-based discrimination involving a student. So either a student as a complainant or a respondent. I'm going to flip through just to make sure I'm giving you all the, what did, we ended up 40, 50 some pages? The policy is, I think, 40-plus pages long, so I apologize. Yeah, I'm going to ask you, can I ask? Could you probably have the, the letters and the sections? In terms of the sections on the policy, that the two, what were the sections of the two, the procedures? Yep, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the record, Linda King. So I, I think that in order to follow the policy and how the policy has changed, it makes a lot of sense and Regent Aris Scott will let me know if, if it's difficult to follow because what we did is we scrapped everything. And there was a very wise attorney in our legal group who said, hey Linda, instead of trying to change what you've got, we've got such extensive changes. I think we're just going to have to do a strike everything and start over. But we, we've kept a lot of the, of the process or of the formatting and, and a lot of the outline. So we've kept it, you had previously an A, B, C, and D. And we've kept that, we've kept an A, B, C, and D. A and B are essentially the same. So if you, if you look at the, at the policy, you'll see that on, it's on page 31 of 74. As you do have 74 material, pages of material that you had to look at. A lot of just are a strike through of the current policy. A and B do not apply to sex discrimination under Title IX, the new Title IX, so 2024 rules, because those requirements and procedures are stated in subsection D, or excuse me, subsection C, which is your old subsection D. Because if you'll recall in 2020, the 2020 regulations required a substantial overhaul of your policy where we had to separate everything out and say, we've got all civil rights discrimination matters. And then we've got Title IX. And Title IX now it has to be a separate, special section with much more rigorous, rigid procedures for complaints and how you handle complaints. So now we've, look at the new regulations under 24 and we've said, all right, some of that, we've got some more flexibility back. So what can we preserve? And how can we meld our buckets of discrimination back together again? And what Eric mentioned was, is we got all the Title IX coordinators together. Why? Because those are the people on the campuses that have to implement this policy. They live in the policy every day and they're charged with compliance with the law. So we asked them in this, in this work group, what makes sense? How do we, how do we combine our buckets under our A, B, C, and D for you to be able to successfully explain this policy to students and employees who come to you with complaints? And what we landed on was A and B can stay the same. We're not going to change those. We might add some tweaks, we might explain now that we're under the 24 regs. We might explain that there's going to be some new definitions. But we're going to take away that section D that handled the 2020 sex, sexual harassment under Title IX. And we're going to now fold in and meld in what we have is sex-based discrimination under Title IX in the 2024 rule. And please stop me along the way because it gets very complicated. But you can rest assure that A and B, to the, to the most extent that they can, remain the same. Section C is where we describe what the obligations of the institutions are under Title IX in general. And then subsection D is where we talk about, all right, now we've got all civil rights complaints that include sexual discrimination. And they include sexual discrimination under Title IX, except for when they involve a student. There are very specific rules that we needed to follow when a student is involved either as a complainant or respondent. So either they're bringing the complaint or they're the person who's the, the subject of the complaint. Those rules have to be distinct. So we have that bucket for procedures. And then we have a procedure bucket where it's everything else. So it's sexual discrimination, even under Title IX. It could be under Title VII, it could be under Title VI. Any civil rights complaint that you might think of or any complaint for sexual discrimination, including Title IX sex discrimination, except for when it involves a student. So those are the two processes that Eric was talking about and how that changes. And you find that in subsection D of the policy. So subsection C, A and B stay the same. Subsection C tells you, hey, this is the new Title IX. These are the definitions, this is what it requires. And you'll see in, in the policy, there's extensive training that's required. And that's where we're going to really need resources and come together. And the Title IX working group is trying to develop a plan where we can maybe have some shared resources and figure out inventive and creative ways of how we can meet our obligations because there is extensive training that's required. There are more individuals that are needed now under the Title IX rules who take on different roles. They have to be conflict-free, they have to be independent. There are dismissals where you need a decision maker to handle a dismissal, for instance, and that can't be your Title IX coordinator. That can't be the person who, at your smaller institutions, is already probably wearing three hats. So a little aside to again emphasize the need of, of resources. So that's in subsection C where you find out all about what the new Title IX regulations require in general. And then that subsection D is your complaint procedures. So because there's more flexibility under the 2024 rule, in those complaint procedures, it allows for what's called the single investigator model for sexual discrimination that's not involving, of course, a student as a complainant or a respondent. So what we, what the Title IX coordinators with, with assistance from the, from the legal offices have done is said, okay, we're going to go back to our pre 2020 model, which was the single investigator model. And so we're going to combine what used to be our old section C and D. And it's going to become part one of section D now because we can, we can treat all those the same. And all the Title IX offices know how to do that process. We're familiar with it, we know how to implement it. It takes less resources generally to use that single investigator model. And now that's allowed for and we have the flexibility to do that. So that's why we've combined that group. This still will be difficult for the Title IX offices because the definition of sex discrimination under the 2024 regulations is incredibly broad now and it overlaps drastically with Title VII, but not quite exactly. So there's going to be a lot of hard analysis that the Title IX offices are going to have to undertake when they're determining, do they go down the road of the single investigator model, which is for everything? Or does their case fall within, you know, Title IX sex discrimination? When it involves a student, you'll see that you have an entirely separate process, which retains a lot of the regulations from the 2020, the 2020 rule, where you have more due process, you have more procedural safeguards and opportunity for an appeal. And you have supportive measures, which you also have for others, but in, in supportive measures can now be challenged, which I think, believe Eric had already mentioned that. So that's a general overview of how your policy changes and how, as you're looking at the 74 pages, your A, B, C, and D are still there. The policy still follows the same type of format. But what we have done is we have melded those together where we could for the ease of the Title IX offices. And I'm happy to add, that's, I understand this is still a very high overview. We can walk through it if you'd like to. But again, I don't know that that's necessary and I'd rather entertain questions and field questions if that's more appropriate at this time, Chair.
Uh, yes, Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor King, thank you for being here, I appreciate it. You, you mentioned and stressed about more resources. Could we have a section E after all these sections? That says, "Resources, Computer-Based Training." That's a resource, but we don't have to have resources? And we just do computer, not hire more people? Get taxpayers, you know, paying more money? When we just have a nice computer-based training that everybody should or could take?
Yes, and we do.
Is that possible? We do, so then what's the resources? Extra resources, lots of them, you said? That kind of scared me.
Well, for training, it, it is a little bit scary because it costs money. And so there are compliance costs associated with complying with all laws and especially when new laws are expanded. So we do have computer-based training that all employees take. When we are looking at, when I mentioned that the Title IX work group is kind of coming together to look at new opportunities and new resources where we can perhaps share services and share different types of, for example, trainings. We have looked into and have found a, a group rate for some computer-based training that we will be able to purchase. And at this point, almost all institutions are able to afford it and will be joining that effort. So, so we are, we're proceeding down that path, so I appreciate your comments on that.
Okay, one more question.
Sure.
So we already have that training, you're saying. So why can't we just update it and then we can say, sharing is caring? And we can all share that instead of, ah, we need more people, let's get more taxpayer money? When this could have been done on these wee little machines that we have here? Or even a little, you know, smaller? So what's the thing about more resources? We already have the training, you said.
Yeah, but we need the people. We need the people to perform the functions. And we can't use the wee little computers to do those jobs. I wish we could because it would, would save our taxpayers' money. But in order to comply with the law, we need to train individuals. And those individuals can't be just the staff that's currently in the offices.
You're saying it's the law?
Correct.
So it's the law says that we have to bring on new people? I love laws and lawyers.
Yeah, well, we have to find, we have to find new people. And what the problem is, is we're running into is, at institutions, many people are wearing several hats already. So you can't just task another person who's at over a .1 FTE already with a new job.
Oh, I get that.
You know, we're trying, so we're trying to look for, and we'll bring this back to the board. We're going to, and first to the chancellor, of course, with a proposal about maybe how we can do compliance, how we can comply in the most effective way.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to clear. So it's an unmandated law, but it's a law and we have to spend the money, but we don't get any extra money. But we have to spend the money to do this.
Yeah.
Outstanding.
Unfunded, yes.
Oh, it just breaks me heart. Awesome. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Regent Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there, with your indulgence, I would like to hear if there's any Title IX people in the audience. I'd like to hear what their take is.
Sure, but do you want to hear from a large institution or a small institution?
One of each, please.
Okay, all right.
All of the above.
I just want to say one thing. Before we get to that, would it be helpful for you to, to also explain to us that some institutions are still falling under the 2020 regulations versus these new 2024 regulations? And, and that maybe there might be a difference in, in the Title IX officers who, who come forward to speak about that.
Sure, if that, if that's okay.
Would that be okay, Regent Perkins? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Linda King again. Yeah, so the Title IX 2024 final rule, the new regulations, are in limbo across the nation. And our system is no exception. It's in limbo here. So we do not have a system, we are not system-wide subject to one of these injunctions. But our, three of our institutions are subject to an injunction. They are not enjoined, so to speak. The Department of Education has been enjoined against enforcing the new rule at over 600 institutions across the nation. And included within that are CSN, UNLV, and UNR. So at those campuses, the general counsel offices have researched the applicability of that injunction and advised their presidents on what laws they should be filing due, due to the, the state of this injunction. It's on appeal, but right now it's in effect. The Department of Education, you've probably read about this, the Department of Education, because there are many different injunctions across the nation that are impacting over 21 states and 600 institutions. The Department of Education went to the Supreme Court and said, hey, we really need a stay because we've got this state of limbo and we'd like you to, to modify these injunctions because the injunctions complain about the new definition of sex discrimination and how it applies to gender identity and, and sexual orientation. And we've got these other aspects of the 2024 rule that apply to And we've got these other aspects of the 2024 rule that apply to, for example, pregnancy and other related conditions. So can you modify it so that part of the rule can go forward in these 21 states and at these 600 institutions? And what the Supreme Court told the Department of Education was, no, sorry, you didn't prove to us, not yet anyway, you didn't prove to us that these aren't so intertwined that we can separate out parts of the rule to move forward. So at this moment, all the injunctions that are in place until appeals courts start to rule on them, and I believe the 11th Circuit just upheld one this week, we're in this state of limbo. So I don't know if you want to hear, in addition from hearing from the Title IX offices, if you want to hear, they can also probably answer questions as to what they're doing on their campuses, which is likely following the 2020 rules, because the Department of Education has come out and on their website said, hey, we acknowledge all these injunctions out there, and we're prohibited from enforcing, so you need to be following 2020.
I would still, oh, sorry. I would still.
Sure, of course. I think that we have the Title IX Coordinator, also CHRO and Chief of Staff for Western Nevada College, potentially out there in...
Somewhere.
Somewhere. [laughing].
For the record, I'm Melody Dooley, Chief of Staff and Chief HR Officer at Western Nevada College. I'm also our Title IX Coordinator and happy to answer any questions that you all might have on the impacts of Title IX at a small institution or the implementation of the new regs. Our institution is not enjoined, so we will be under the 2020 regs.
And what does that look like, being under the 2020 regs versus the 2024?
Oh, I apologize. I misspoke. We're going to be under the 2024 regs.
Okay. So what's that? Go ahead.
So for us, it's probably going to be a bit of a change to the type of caseload that we currently experience. As CHRO Gililand and Lynda King referenced, the change in the definition of what is prohibited conduct is now expanded, and so things that may not have fallen under the Title IX jurisdiction before will now. And probably the biggest impact that will mean to us is that there will be more administrative and complex procedures applying to more cases than they applied to before. We did still have quite a few administrative and complex processes for non-Title IX complaints. This will put more of those complaints will now fall under Title IX and need to be addressed with the additional administrative steps.
Thank you for that. What about from one of the larger institutions? Well, you said UNR, UNLV. Okay.
Hello. I'm Zeva Edmondson, Z-E-V-A-E-D-M-O-N-D-S-O-N, for the record, and I'm the Title IX Coordinator for UNR. And so, as others have said, we are one of those institutions that is not able to comply yet with the 2024 regs. We're on hold while the litigation continues. However, we are expecting, with the broadening of the jurisdiction and the definitions, a higher caseload, so we know that we may have to add additional staff there, along with just processes, like we talked about, the challenger appeals to supportive measures, things like that. So that's going to just require more staff than what we have. So that's what one of the main concerns is for all of the Title IX coordinators involved in the process there. So right now, we are still under the 2020 regs until we're told we can move forward with the 2024 regs.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. I'm not sure who should answer. How do these regs apply to, let's say, restrooms or locker rooms?
Can you hear me? All right. Again, Eric Gilland, for the record. That's a great question. So all of our campuses, to my knowledge, and if I'm incorrect, if one of the presidents can correct me, we all have gender-neutral, all genders, whatever the title of the single-stall restrooms would be. As long as I've been in NCH, it's always been the approach. We don't have any formal policies. We permit people to use the restrooms in which they feel most aligned or most comfortable, whatever term you'd like to use with that. So these regulations would provide protection against discriminating against somebody or harassing somebody because of the restroom they use, if it's sex-based. Again, I'd point out that state law also provides that same protection against discrimination.
And how about a locker room? Like, a woman's in a locker room, taking a shower, and a transgender female can walk into the locker room? And that woman would not be able to say, like, that she would not be able to file a complaint?
I'm going to look back at my friend, because I don't know that it specifically addresses locker rooms. If it's in, I guess if it's in connection with the athletic programs, this wouldn't address that.
Okay.
I don't, honestly, I don't have the answer for that about how we would, would we treat that in the same capacity as we would the restroom or not. I recognize that there are some differences in terms of the use of the rooms. Perhaps that may be something that we can maybe do some research on and come back, or unless you've got a...
Lynda King, for the record, your question was, could they file a complaint? Yes. All complaints welcome. Would the complaint have...
Who would be protected, I guess, in that complaint?
Right. Who would be protected? I think, again, I'm going to go back to what I tell the board often when we're talking about the legal issues and complaints and discrimination, it's fact-specific. So this is likely a scenario where you're talking about a sports team. And it may not be. It may not be. Could you bring the complaint? Yes. Could it constitute discrimination against the individual whose biological sex does not correspond to the locker room? Yes. Under the regulations, it could. Nevada does not have a state law on this. Some other states do. And many of those right now are enjoined as well, while there's legal battles. So I can't give you a clear answer as to whether or not any particular factual scenario would constitute discrimination, but yes, that individual could bring the complaint.
I do have one quick follow-up question, if I may, Chair. And my final question is, how does this relate to, let's say, pronouns? Can a person, you know, provide a complaint if the wrong pronoun's used? I mean, I'm sure that, like, we all want to try to respect everybody else's space and, you know, call people what they'd like to be called. How does that work, though, if someone doesn't use the proper pronoun, or, you know, that kind of stuff?
Yes, a complaint could be brought, and it would be analyzed under the definition, most likely in that instance, of sex-based harassment. And so you would look at the standard. Is it sufficiently severe or pervasive? And again, it's that or rather than the and, which is a lessened standard. But you look at a totality of facts. You look at the totality of the circumstances to make that, and that's what our Title IX coordinators and investigators are charged with. But yes, and pronouns are an example that are used in the final rule as an incident that may rise to the level of sex-based harassment or discrimination. You're welcome.
Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Chair. Counselor King, don't run away. We like you up here. So I'm a wee bit confused now. Does it mean we don't have a rule or regulation if a transgender, and I won't use the term that I used before, men masquerading as women? If a man goes into, a transgender goes into a female's, that was what you were asking, I think? But we have, nothing can be done about it? Is that what you're saying? They have the right to go in there, even if they have the XX and XY chromosome, they can still go into that bathroom and, I mean, the shower, and we will do nothing?
I, Lynda King, for the record, I'm not sure if you're asking me about policing of our restrooms, or if you're asking me about a complaint.
Complaint. Policing is done. That's out of our hands.
Right.
Because anybody can walk in there and say, I'm a woman.
You can use a restroom that aligns with your gender identity, yes. But we have on our campuses gender-neutral facilities for individuals to use as well. If there could be a complaint, broaden that scenario that you're bringing.
No, I'm talking about the athletes, the female athletes and their shower areas. I'm talking about that. So any guy can walk in there and say, hey, I'm a woman today. That's fine. I'm going in there.
No.
Why not? Because he'll say to himself, he wants to say to you.
First, Regent Boylan, I don't want to give legal advice on hypotheticals. That's always a bad idea for a lawyer to do, because we deal in a world of concrete facts. And I understand that you're trying to get to a general scenario. Do we have rules where just...
That's what I'm getting to.
Anyone who is a male who identifies as female can walk into a locker room? No, I don't think so. I don't think that that would happen in our sports context. I mean, would that sound, it sounds like a stranger would just pop up in the room. So I think that we should deal with things that are more, if we can provide some more context or facts to what you're trying to ask, because I don't want to advise on something that's...
I've provided context and facts. I've stated my facts. If someone walks in there who says he's transgender, we have no rules and regulations. If the girl who's having a shower comes out and complains, nothing complains, nothing can be done to that guy, transgender, right?
If that individual had a right to be in the restroom, I really do think we're missing facts here. Are we talking about a stranger? Are we talking about somebody who's on a sports team and sharing a facility?
Anybody. I'm just talking about males and females and the safety of female athletes.
Yeah.
So that's the fact. Let's say that's the fact. It has happened in this country. And it could happen here.
It could.
So if it happened here, we have no rules and regulations to do anything about it. That's what I'm asking you. I'm not saying hypotheticals. I'm saying it has happened. So if it happens here, nothing you do.
Well, I think that I would need more facts to be able to advise you as to a legal answer as to what would happen. We would need to know, where does this occur? What campus does it occur on? What are their regulations about the use? There are policies and procedures at the campuses about what their, where their athletic facilities and showers, how they can be used, who they're used by. Is this a transgender individual who's participating on a team? If that's the question, then yes, they can use that facility. And there are, as you've stated, these things have occurred, and there's lawsuits pending across the nation right now about these very issues. But if we want to talk about specifics about a campus here and what those rules are, we can drill down into that, but I would need more facts, and I would need more information from our campuses.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Regent Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. The agenda item, when it talks about this being for possible action, also talks about that this is essentially being done on an emergency, temporary basis. So when this is being outlined as temporary, what does temporary mean?
Okay. So the Title IV Chapter VIII policy revisions will be permanent. That doesn't require an emergency basis. It doesn't require the two readings. You'll be hopefully making a motion to approve that so that we remain in compliance and don't jeopardize our federal funding, so that our policy's in compliance. What's being brought to you on an emergency basis is the code amendments. Because code amendments require two readings, we don't have time for those two readings. The law's in effect now. And for those institutions that are subject to the 2024 rule, we need to have the corollary disciplinary procedures that align with the policy. So those are being brought to you on an emergency basis so that we can approve them and get them in effect immediately. When the 2020 rules went into effect, it was during COVID, and we had a really long lag time. And the Title IX offices faced a dilemma where they had a policy that they were following, but they didn't have a corollary disciplinary procedure that matched. So we've made the amendments to Title II, Chapter VI, and Title II, Chapter X. So they apply to both employees and students, so that those disciplinary procedures now reference back to the new policy.
Thank you. And then in terms of the complaint procedures, is there an advancement here in new revised policy that streamlines the complaint procedures? Is it making it more accessible for students to be able and faculty to be able to file a complaint if they feel they need to?
I believe that it's more streamlined in the sense that the Title IX coordinators were involved in the drafting and in the combining of the complaint procedures for all of the other discrimination complaints, along with sex discrimination under Title IX, so long as it doesn't involve a student who is either a complainant or respondent, so that they're explaining to students and employees who come to them a policy that is more streamlined and that's a little bit easier to understand. And it's really difficult to say that when we're talking about a policy that's over 44 pages, when we have the strikeouts and everything done, which is why the Title IX Coordinator Group wants to stay together. This is an informal group who has had, made amazing efforts and has a fantastic collaborative spirit, because they want to do just that, Regent Brooks. They want to have a policy that is easy for people to understand and for students and employees to know where they need to go and what they need to do. Also, to that extent and to that point, the Title IX rule, the 2024 rule, states that we have to have more in writing. So we have to have more in writing, letting folks know about where they need to go. And more individuals under this policy are what we call a mandated reporter. So that's, again, with the computer training that we're going to do, Regent Boylan, we're going to train our employees to understand when they need to report matters, or when they need to just give a student the information or an employee about, I understand what you're telling me, or it sounds like what you've told me, you know, might constitute, you know, conduct that we don't allow on our campus, and here's information of where you should go.
Thank you. And so the process, then, for students or faculty to file a complaint, just, it sounds to me like what you're describing is a revised education of what that looks like to students and faculty, so they know the process and they know how to file a complaint. Will that, will that process, or what it is that the committee would like to do to make sure that students and faculty understand the process, will that come back to the board as well, so that we're aware of new implementations to help out with procedures?
No, it wouldn't necessarily. It can if you'd like it to. As the group moves forward, tentatively, I think, you know, the group has wanted to be consistent across campuses, consistent across institutions, but there could be some degree of variance of how they present this information and how they want their employees to present it, depending on where, what office they use, what campus it's on. We've got large institutions that have satellite campuses. So I do think that that's something more in the purview of the campuses and in the institutions, but of course, if you'd like that information, we can certainly bring it back.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Regent McMichael.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, in the entire system, has there ever been a complaint in regards to gender-associated bathrooms?
I apologize, Regent McMichael. I wouldn't have that information. I would be guessing. I just don't have that information readily available.
Could you get that back to me? Because I think it's important that we, at least in this discussion, find out whether or not there has been cases where individuals didn't feel comfortable and complained, because I think that's very important for us to know.
Sure. If a formal complaint, we can look into and statistically find out if there's been a formal complaint.
Thank you. Regent Ariscotta.
First, we have a comment from Rena.
Oh, of course. Please go ahead.
Hi, Zeva Edmondson, again, for the record, Title IX Coordinator for UNR. I can tell you, we have not, at UNR, had a complaint like that.
Thank you, Zeta. Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for you, for Counselor Lynda King. Ms. King, question for you in regards to, on the briefing material, I'm beginning on page 56. What you stated is that a streamlined process in regards to procedures required for Title IX harassment involving a student or complaint or respondent, what I'm looking at is, what's been removed are 16 pages of procedures, and now it's condensed into one paragraph? Can you give us a little, or you keep providing me, a little bit of broadness or... Can you give us a little, or you keep providing me, a little bit of broadness or explanation of the streamline necessary to remove 16 pages and combine it or condense it into one paragraph?
I'm, I'm looking at page 56 of 74 as labeled by board staff in submitting the supplement. And I, I don't understand where exactly you're referencing, but I can state that 16 pages have not been deleted in their entirety and replaced with a paragraph.
I'm referenced, I'm referenced in Board Material 3B.
Ah, yes. Okay. So you're looking at not the, the code amendments to the, to the Student Code of Conduct. So what we did with the code, with the code amendments is rather than reiterate the policy, what had been done in the past is to say, in the, in the disciplinary sections is to say, discipline will be in accordance with the policy in Title Four, Chapter Eight. And then it duplicated everything that was in Title Four, Chapter Eight. Rather than duplicate that, we've made a cross-reference to say, hey, go look at Title Four, Chapter Eight, and that's what you follow. And we have had the discussions whether or not we felt comfortable, the Title IX coordinators were comfortable with that. And what we decided was, we need, we need this and we need it to be implemented now. We like the idea of not being, not having the duplication, of not being redundant. It lessens the pages that are in the, the code and the handbook. It's clear as to where you need to go to look. The definitions did remain, so that those definitions are there for student conduct officers. However, because this is brought to you on a temporary emergency basis, you're going to see this again. And you likely will see it in a revised form if we find that there is input or complaints from the student conduct offices, or after the Title IX officers are implementing this, that they find that, yeah, the cross-reference isn't sufficient, people aren't understanding it. But because those are, the information is already there in your handbook, we felt that there wasn't a need to duplicate that information and that it was sufficient to cross-reference to that information.
Exactly the explanations I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from Regents? Okay. I'll go to Regent Perkins and then to Regent Goodman.
Okay. Having trouble with the microphone here. You said, well, generally we have two readings. So this reading will change it or it won't change it? Will we have a second reading?
Yeah. So typically, when a code amendment is brought, it's brought under the provision that requires two readings. But we're not under that provision. So to avoid having to have the two, not to avoid, but well, yeah, to avoid, because we didn't have time, to do the two readings, we're under what, the handbook that allows for us to come forward and on an emergency basis. So this is only good for 120 days. We either have to bring it back identically to you in 120 days for it to be permanent, be permanent, or we'll need to follow another process, which could be the two readings, or it could be bringing it back with a 30-day notice to all interested stakeholders, which means the presidents and the faculty senate chairs would see it 30 days before it comes back to you, if we decide to revise it. If we decide that these temporary amendments are good, and this, this happened during COVID, when you, when you all approved the vaccine mandate, it had to be under an emergency basis, it'll come back in 120 days.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, absolutely.
Regent Goodman?
Thank you. I just wanted to share that I, I'm torn on this vote. I, I can appreciate a lot of the issues that this new, these new regs cover. At the same time, I, I just, I feel like there's just not enough protection for our girls and our women. And so I also don't want to jeopardize our federal funding. But I just wanted to share with this board that, that's where I am on this. I, I feel like there's a lot of really great stuff here, but I also feel like there just isn't enough protection for, for our, for our women. And so I, I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Vice Chair Downs?
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. Just want to say thank you to the, to Eric and Linda and the rest of the team who put this together. I know this is a very complex and challenging set of documents to try to incorporate, but to keep us in compliance, I appreciate all the effort that everyone has done in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Regent Brager?
In regards to what Regent Goodman stated, are we able to bring in a gender item in relationship to that specific concern? I have, I have, I have the same concern that, that we need to protect our women in sports. There's no other way to say that. I am not opposed to anyone being transgender or living their life how they want, but I do feel like our women need protection.
Lynda King, for the record, of course you could. It's, it's your, you know, as a, as a new business item. Some points I'd like to make on that are, you know, we, we stated earlier, the 2024 rule, Department of Education has told us, this does not apply to athletics, participation and eligibility for athletics. So those new rules are coming. There are many challenges and many changes, that's the second point I wanted to make right now, across the nation with respect to transgender individual participation in collegiate athletics. There are several pending cases. There are state laws, there are other conflicts, there's a case that will probably be determinative of this issue right now, pending, I believe it's in Georgia, perhaps? I think it might be in Georgia. So while you may wish to, and of course, it's within your purview, to have a new business item for, for, to either discuss, to have information, there are also a lot of legal impacts and a legal significance to that issue. So you may want to, you know, touch base with our office first, so we can have some discussions before any item is, is agendized.
Of course. And I appreciate that. But even though it's not in effect now, I think it's something that we need to address and not to harm anyone, but for clarity. And so I would be happy to have a discussion with you so that the proper information was brought forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regent DelCarlo?
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. And just to follow on with Regent Brager and Goodman, I agree. And if we were to do that and bring it to you and go through everything, whatever we were to pass as a board, since the federal part on the athletics is pending, at the point that that comes out federally, we would have to then be in compliance, correct?
Correct. And anything that you brought forward right now would need to be in compliance. And that's why we'd want to work with you on anything that came forward. But NCAA, for example, right now, has, has a policy in, in place. And we would not want to create policy in conflict with the NCAA. Their policy is under review. So as you've said, that may change and there may be other federal changes. So we would just want to work with you on, on what you all would like to bring forward to make sure that you don't bring something forward that you couldn't implement.
Thank you very much for your clarification.
Thank you.
Regent McMichael?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes. Because legislature is pending on this matter, and I still would like information before we were to make a decision on this in regards to whether or not any claims of, of this particular nature has been made at any of our institutions. I would respectfully ask that this matter be set aside for another meeting.
Thank you for that comment, Regent McMichael. I do believe that the, the problem that we face is these are regulations that have been put forth by the U.S. Department of Education's Title IX regulations that need to be approved in order for us to retain our federal funding. And, and I would appreciate Counsel King's input on that or, or Mr. Gilliland as well.
Sure. And Lynda King, for the record. Regardless of whether or not you approve this policy, the legal advice on all of your campuses will likely to be to comply with federal law. And this policy is a little late in coming to you because there were a lot of complexities and it wasn't quite ready for you before the effective August first date. And the chancellor sent out a memo prior to August 1st, letting all the campuses know this law is in effect, the 2024 regs are in effect on, on August 1. There's a delay in policy catching up. But on your campuses, know that you should be complying with the law. So I would, I would hope and urge the board to enact policy that's in compliance with the law. And we can continue, of course, to have discussions on the particular points that have been raised today with respect to individual scenarios.
Thank you. First, I'm going to go to Vice Chair Downs and then I will go to you, Regent Brager.
I'd like to make a motion that we prove this proposal.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Downs.
I'd like to second that motion.
I, Regent Brown, did, were you attempting to make the second?
Yeah, that was me.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please.
A motion by Vice Chair Downs, a second by Regent Brown. And then I'll go to discussion. Regent Boylan?
Come on. Okay, it works. Thank you, Madam Chair. I am so pleased to hear so many members of this board now thinking and speaking up about the safety of our female athletes. Really makes me happy. I took the brunt of all the people who loved me and like Regent Brager says, I really don't care what you like or what you, what floats your boat, you know, what turns you on. I really don't care. But I am just concerned about the safety. And we've seen what's happened with our Title IX and transgenders playing against women. We saw it in the Olympics. But it really makes me happy to see so many Regents now speaking up. And hopefully, we will get something done about this. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So at this time, because we've had extensive discussion, I think it's appropriate to take a roll call vote. Carrie?
Regent Brooks?
Yes.
Regent Brown?
Yes.
Chair Carvalho?
Yes.
Regent Cruz Crawford?
Yes.
Regent DelCarlo?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Downs?
Yes.
Regent Goodman?
Abstained.
Regent McMichael?
No.
Regent Perkins?
Yes.
Regent Tarkanian?
Yes.
Regent Ariscotta?
Yes.
Regent Boylan?
Hi.
Regent Brager?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number four, 2025-27 Biennial N.C. State Operating Budget Request. For this, I will go to Interim Chancellor Patty Charlton and Chief Financial Officer, Officer Chris Vatone.
Good morning for the record, Patty Charlton, Interim Chancellor. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here today and present the final step in the approval of the operating priorities for the 25 legislative session that will cover our 2025-2027 funding biennial state budget. This is information that you first heard in February and March at your quarterly meeting, where institutions were able to provide an overview of their operating priorities. You provided direction to our staff and to us at that time. We brought information back at the June meeting that recognized and addressed those recommendations. We also further worked with the campuses to ensure that we had consistency in the request and that we weren't missing any of those pieces. And so Vice Chancellor Vatone is going to walk through this. We are looking for your approval today. As this time, next Friday, we will be submitting to the governor's office our legislative request for consideration as we move forward to the 25th session. And so with that, Vice Chancellor Vatone.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. Chris Vatone. And as Chancellor Charlton mentioned, I'll walk you through the presentation today. I want to apologize in advance, there's a lot of numbers in this presentation. There's a lot of slides with a lot of numbers. I'm going to go through it. I'm going to try to go through it and focus on the context and not actually try to read the numbers to you. But I want you to, wanted to ask to please stop me along the way if you do have some questions or if there's something that I'm going too quickly on and you want to spend more time on it. So there's a few items to talk about today. Actually, the presentation's really focused in two main areas, and they're number three and four on this list. The, the systems-based budget building approach and then the items for special consideration, which are those things that you saw earlier in, in several presentations. But generally here, they're consistent with what you saw most recently at the June meeting. So I'll go ahead and get started. Here's our timeline. We've been working on this for some time, as the chancellor mentioned, starting back in January with the campus visits. And, and you have had several, I feel like I've been presenting almost every meeting on the budget in one way or another. Happy to be at this point and looking forward to this. While it's the last item on this slide, it's really the beginning of the process when we, when we do push that button and send this to the governor's office and then start working with them on the next phase with the governor's recommended budget and looking forward to the legislature. So I talked a little bit at the, at the June meeting. At that time, we'd only recently heard the, received from the governor's finance office, the system spending limit. That process changed this cycle, as I mentioned, where it begins with the FY25 legislatively approved budgets. That, we receive those, we've worked with the governor's office and, and received some support from them. I'll get to that as we get into the budget building. So I've, I've included this slide in reference to the spending limit, but we're really not going to spend time on that today because we did talk about that in June. It is just the starting point. What, what we're going to go through today are those adjustments that are part of our adjusting process to get to our adjusted base that starts the, that, that, that then builds with our request for items for special consideration. Normally at this meeting and normally in this process, you're seeing not only our requests, but the running of the systems, the formula, the funding formula for the formula budgets. As you know, we've had a lot of work with the, the ad hoc committee on, on the formula. And, and today's presentation doesn't cover those recommendations. We're going to be, I know the report was just published earlier this week and, and shared with you. We are planning on returning at your quarterly meeting in September to, to present the recommendations and the impacts, the, actually run those numbers for you. So today, I, where, where we are at this point is following the legislative direction from 2023, which is what's before you on this slide. So we were directed, knowing that the legislature approved funding for a review of the formula, to build our 25-27 budget using a base maintenance enhancement approach, the same approach taken by the legislature when they closed the budgets in the 23rd session. And so that's what you're seeing today. We stopped short of running the reallocation that the, the current formula based on weighted student credit hours. There are still some components of the current formula that are part of the adjusting base process, and those were used last session also. And so we'll cover those today. So you see a little bit what looks like the old formula, but it's really the adjustment process to the base budget. And I'll cover those as we get into them. So again, we have, this is just the process that we followed. And again, it's simplified in these slides. The campuses have been working on this for, for a couple of months. It's a lot of, a lot of work pulling this all together. And there's a lot of iterations as we do this. The governor's office is also working on the statewide, all agencies probably going through the same process. And they go through and are making adjustments along the way to inflation factors and statewide cost allocations and things. So it's a, there's a lot of, a lot of moving, moving targets, moving information going through this and a lot of effort on the campuses to keep things in sync and updated. And so we really appreciate all the work that's going into it at the campus level in addition to my office with the, the budget team there pulling it together. I'm going to walk you through in the next few slides, those, those adjustments to the base. And I think, again, I'll, I'll cover them highly, but please stop as we go. So each, each biennial process on those formula budgets, you, we, we receive a caseload adjustment, caseload. caseload referring to our, our weighted student credit hour completions. And so this slide shares for you the 2022 weighted student credit hour counts that were the basis of the 23 appropriations and the 2024 weighted student credit hours, which is the most, most recently completed academic year. The weighted student credit hours are, are credit hours weighted for the different disciplines and different academic levels. So lower division, upper division, graduate, doctorate, and then by discipline. So a credit hour has a different weight and, and those weights are how we get to the adjusted weighted student credit hours. These are also only resident student credit hours completions and it is completion. So following the same protocol that would apply in federal financial aid, if students complete the term, their resident student completions are what factors into weighted student credit hours. So it's not all student credit hours, but once those students are part of the population of the, of the resident completions, then the credit hours are weighted and that's what you have summarized here. So you can't, you can't, when you, the tendency is to try to compare this to enrollment. Because it's weighted and because it's only residents and because it's completions, you'll never see a, a direct correlation to the enrollment numbers you look at when you look at the, the, the systems official enrollment records. It's also what makes it very difficult for campuses to predict how they're going to weigh out in the, in this, in the, in the system-wide distribution of weighted student credit hours because there's all those variables that go into it. But this is the outcome for this session. You see it's a pretty significant increase over 2022. I would point out that in 2022, there was a pretty significant decrease over 2020. So this is an increase. Let me, let me switch to the next slide so you can see the impacts in dollars. You might recall the 2022 counts over 2020 were resulting in a weighted student credit hour decline and a, as caseload adjustments can go up, they also can go down. In the 2022 cycle, that was the case. And so while there's a significant dollar increase on this slide, this is offsetting what was a significant decrease in 2022. So first change here in terms of comparing to the historical approach on this, I want to point out, the legislative direction to use the same approach the legislature did in closing our last budgets is what you see in the middle column under FY25 rate. The typical approach, the historical approach on applying a caseload adjustment to our budgets is to use the calculated weighted student credit hour value from the odd year of the current biennium based on the legislative closed budgets. And that's what that number represents in the middle there. The challenge here is that those appropriations that are used in that calculation don't reflect the cost of living adjustments that are approved by the legislature because those cost of living appropriations go to board of examiners after the fact. And so it's not, not part of the systems budget closing in such a way that it has factored into that weighted student credit hour value in, in the historical calculation. So having concern with that because of the size of these cost of living adjustments that we have for 24 and 25, we talked with the governor's office and the legislative council bureau of fiscal staff and, and so we are bringing forward in, in our maintenance adjustment, an additional adjustment to reflect the COLA impact on the weighted student credit hour value so that that is also reflected in the caseload growth. So with those two items together, it's a, it represents a $27.7 million annual increase to the systems formula-based budgets for the 26-27 appropriations that we'll request. One of the other items that, that essentially is also a caseload adjustment, but applicable specifically to the smaller institutions, the, the, the formula in place today has had a small institution factor adjustment to reflect the economy of scale, the challenge of funding, some central service, central administration, things that are generally a fixed cost on a smaller campus. That, that calculation has been established as $30 per weighted student credit hour for the credit hour difference between their actual credit hours and $100,000 cap. Until this session, both Great Basin and Western Nevada College have had a small institution factor adjustment. This count year, Western Nevada's weighted student credit hours for the first time are exceeding the $100,000, $100,000 credit hour, weighted student credit hour limit. And so you'll see there, a small institution factor adjustment is, is adjusting to zero. Great Basin's based on their credit hours is there for you. And again, these are, these are annual numbers. So we, later in the slides, you'll see biennial numbers, but these, these adjustments are all calculated annually and then applied to the annual appropriations. The other, the other institution-specific adjustments is the research, operation and maintenance adjustment for UNR and UNLV. This adjustment is calculated using the campus's actual data. This calculation first derives an average cost per square foot of the campus's maintenance. It's using state operating budgets only, so it's not all operation and maintenance expenses. It's just those funded through the state appropriations. Determine that average per square foot rate and apply it to their dedicated research space. And this is a, this is an adjustment that's intended to assist with the additional operation and maintenance costs on dedicated research space that's not part of the instructional space that in theory is funded through the weighted student credit hours. So this adjustment here also an annual adjustment. I, I think I'll pause here for a caveat I should have provided earlier. As I mentioned, all these numbers, through, through this process, we continue to work on these numbers and the governor's office continues to work on theirs, so we do get adjustments along the way. This is one. You'll notice there's a difference in the average per square foot maintenance cost there. We are, we noticed that's a decent sized difference. We're investigating that with the two campuses. We want to make sure these numbers are being prepared as consistently as possible. So we may, we may have an adjustment to this before we hit enter on next Friday. These costs have been, again, they're, these are pulling from state operating budgets and, and, and based on their space data. But again, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of equations that go into this, so just wanting to make sure we're consistent before we hit send there. In, in the, in the systems-based budgets and part of the system spending limit, one of the items, of course, that we've been most interested in is the cost of living adjustments. And we were happy to get the support of the governor's finance office in building into the system spending limit. The cost of living adjustments at the minimum of 80%. It is minimum of 80. So as you recall, when the legislature closed the budgets and allocated cost of living funding to the system, it was based on the proportional state appropriation in each budget account. So some received as much as 100, but others were, I think the low end was close to 60%. So concerned, we've been concerned and as you've heard many times about the 80%, 80% floor on that and the governor's office has supported adding that to our spending limit. So it's in the numbers that you're seeing today. It is not, you'll see that it's not on the systems priority list any longer because we do have it in the base at this point. So we're, we're pleased with that. I think.
Regent Del Carlo.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. So just to clarify, I want to make sure I hear you right. So you're saying that the governor is putting it in at 80%? And so why, that's why it's not going to be on our list anymore?
Right, right. So we are working from an adjusted base.
Huge.
So this is, this is, we're starting from an adjusted base that includes the COLA adjustments for 24 and 25 at the minimum of 80%. It is just our base, it's part of our base request. So our request goes to the governor's office. Governor then publishes his governor's recommended budget that'll go to the legislature for the legislature to, to consider and ultimately legislature will approve, approve the budget. So the, for us, this is just a first step. It's part of our spending limit. It's, it'll be in our base.
But it's going in at 80%?
Right.
Oh, that's, hallelujah. Thank you for all your hard work, chancellor and you.
So moving, moving on to this slide, my first with a lot of numbers on it. I wanted to, I wanted to share this one just to, I think this, my interest here was just trying to help understand what makes up the growth when you look at the next few slides, when you compare our current fiscal year appropriation to the 26 and 27 appropriations. Because there is a pretty significant increase in, 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 in those appropriations. However, wanted you to know what, what kind of makes up that. So the top part of this slide, these are items that are, so the Kirk Kukorin School of Medicine appropriation, that was a originally approved by the legislature as a one-shot appropriation. That is the appropriation for the expansion of the school of medicine that was actually intended to be a recurring. And again, governor's finance office has built that into the spending limit for the school of medicine, so we don't need to request that. But that is part of the increase. Similarly, behavioral health institute was also funded that way, but also has been added to the spending limit in that case. So similarly, it's part of the new base and not, not a, not on your request list. And, and similar for the Native American fee waiver. While that waiver is not sufficient to cover, as you know, the costs that we've incurred, it is still at least part of the new base and available there. The other line item there, M150 state adjustments, that's, that's what I keep referring to where the state will make adjustments to things that are applicable to all state agencies so they'll have cost wide, statewide cost allocations, cost sharing that we receive charges for. We all, you'll also see later in the process, we, we haven't seen it yet, but it will ultimately adjust our budgets like it adjusts all state budgets. These numbers to date don't include any adjustments for the larger benefits that'll hit all state accounts. So PERS and Health Public Employee Benefits Program, health benefits are adjustments that we'll expect eventually to see on these numbers, but haven't, haven't been, been adjusted yet. Second part of this slide are just all those caseload adjustment items I went through in, in the previous couple of slides. So, so the, the, again, the idea there, the takeaway from this slide is the increase from 862 million in FY25 appropriations to 926 in FY26 is a pretty significant increase, but this is not new capacity. These are existing programs, existing caseload. It's just updated for primarily the cost of living adjustment, that top line. Moving to this slide, this is a comparison in the budget categories. So you have several budget categories. We talk a lot about the instructional formula, but we also have the professional schools and Desert Research Institute and the other non-formulas that are things like the statewide programs, system administration, system computing services, other, other non-formular appropriations. And again, this is, this is why I wanted to do the slide that you saw first because this seven, 7.4% increase seems like a pretty, we're grateful for that increase. It's a significant amount, but it is current capacity. So included in our state-supported operating budgets, besides, we focus a lot on state appropriation. However, the state-supported operating budgets include other non-appropriation revenues and those are all part of this process also. So with the campuses, we have to roll those numbers up and include them in the systems' budget request. And you may recall at your June meeting, there was an item where you were approving the distribution of the registration fee for the 26-27 fiscal years. That was necessary for this, for this, this phase of the budget building. The two largest items in your non, non-appropriation revenues is the state, state-supported operating budget allocation of the registration fee. That's line one. And the non-resident fees, which is line two. Those are your two biggest components of the other revenues that are in the state-supported operating budget. So this slide is summarizing for you all of the revenue that goes into the state-supported operating budgets for the system. This is still just the state-supported operating budget. So outside these numbers, you have the other self-supporting activity on the campuses and sponsored program, research grants, activity. So this, the, the numbers you have here are all of the state-supported operating budget, but, but only the state-supported operating budget. Yes.
Regent Del Carlo.
Thank you, Chair. Under, I wish to put my glasses back on. They transfer from the hospital affiliate. That, is that the practice plans?
Thanks for that question. Actually, that's, that's an item related to the University of Nevada Reno's medical school and Medicaid. It's a, it's a, it's revenue from Renown, their hospital partner, that is mission support of, program support for the, for the university, but it replaces funds that are being used to, to, to fund Medicaid upper payment limit program with Nevada Medicaid. So it's, it's balancing the budget through revenue received from Renown in offset to expended, expense the medical school has to, to fund the Medicaid program that benefits the Medicaid, state Medicaid program.
Okay, and could I have a follow-up then?
Yes.
And is the same thing down south at UNLV?
There is essentially the same programs in the south. They work a little differently because the south, the, the southern healthcare is, is market is a little different. So in this, in the south, the, the comparable level of Medicaid activity happens in the, in the county programs.
In the what?
In University Medical Center, Clark County. So there isn't the same size of program that goes through the medical school in the south as goes through the medical school in the north, but the two programs are very similar in both cases. And UNLV Medical School does have a similar program, it's just a much smaller size, so you don't, it's not running through their state-supported budget.
Interesting.
Please go ahead, President Sandoval.
To Regent Del Carlo, Brian Sandoval, for the record, president of the University of Nevada Reno, to you and to you, Madam Chair, to Regent Del Carlo, I apologize for the microphone issue. So essentially, this is one of the benefits of the affiliation. Renown would not have been eligible to apply for these Medicaid funds in absence of the affiliation agreement. It essentially is a break even. It comes out of the budget of the University of Nevada Reno Medical School to do that, that matching and then it comes back. So it's, and essentially the benefit is this, it doesn't come to the medical school, I mean, some of it comes to the medical school, but it benefits healthcare in northern Nevada because it dramatically increases the amount of Medicaid money, which allows for higher reimbursements to Medicaid providers and also may entice because of that, more Medicaid providers in the community, which provides more access to patients.
So just to follow up then, it's a zero-sum game. So this is replacing the, because the expense went out by the medical school, so this is just coming back in. So this is not like a profit money. This is just to make you whole.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification. I don't think, did anybody of us know any of this? I didn't.
Regent Del Carlo.
There's, there's some more here.
Oh, okay.
More good, good news.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Klinger, please. I, this question has come up, I believe, in BFF once before and it is very complicated. So I appreciate the, the experts in the room.
Chair Carvalho, regents, for the record, Andrew Klinger, vice president of finance administration at University of Nevada Reno, through you, Madam Chair, to Regent Del Carlo. I was just whispering in the president's ear to remind him that the, the really good news about this is we take $26 million of state funds and we actually turned it into $52 million in total. So there's $52 million in Medicaid services that are provided as this matching requirement. So there's $52 million in Medicaid services that are provided as this matching requirement, and then we get our piece back through the academic support payment from Renown. So just good news.
Thank you.
I think the... So if there are more questions on that, I think the other item I just wanted to point out, you noticed the registration fee increase there. These reflect the happy adjustments on those registration fees. And in the original budgets, this is appropriation in original budgets versus current budgets. So the '25 registration fee budgets didn't include that 5% additional increase that was approved at the December meeting to help fund the cost of living adjustments for the system. The happy adjustments that do apply to the registration fees for this '26, '27 year are the 2.7% for '26 and 5.2% for '27. And moving to this slide, this is that same summary from the previous page, just organized by your budget accounts, so you can see the effect of the total state-supported operating budget revenues and how they're distributed among those accounts. On the expenditure side, revenues and expenditures in state-supported operating budgets balance to zero. So you have expenditures that are summarized by function in the same proportion or the same totals that you saw on the previous slide. And again, this is a roll-up of all those budget accounts. In the other materials you have, in the additional materials, you can see the individual budget accounts. This is just system-wide total. So moving to this next section, these are your items for special consideration. We probably all interchange enhancement with item for special consideration. That's the technical term in the state budget vernacular for things that are outside the spending limit. So everything that we're requesting is in excess of that spending limit that we were provided from the Governor's Office, because everything prior was covering the cost of living adjustments and just the ongoing roll-up of the current capacity. So... And again, these are slides that are going to look very familiar. Sure.
I believe I have a question from Regent Boylan for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I figured I should ask this now before you go too far in this. I'm still at what Regent Del Carlo said about the 80%. The Governor's Office is doing what? I'm kind of lost. The numbers of... The 80%, they agree that we should get 80%? And then you said there's some that are going to get 100% or something like that. What was that?
So the way the systems budgets were closed in the current sessions, or our '24 and ' '25 budgets, included cost of living allocations that were determined based on the proportion of state appropriation within each budget account. So where a budget account may be 100% state appropriation, the only revenue, if we go back to the slide...
Yeah, it's way back there.
So this slide where you can see the state appropriation as a portion of the total revenue, each budget account, this is all budget accounts, so each budget account has a different proportion of state appropriation to its total revenues. That proportion is what was used to fund the cost of living adjustments for the system in '24 and '25. What the spending limit includes, so what our current adjusted basis that will go into our request include is the lesser of 80% or the actual appropriation percentage. So in some cases, that's 100%. In some cases, it's between 80 and 100%.
Oh, I see. Thank you so much.
Not less than 80%.
Not less than... Okay, thank you so much.
So I'll probably pause on the slides that have the numbers in this case, because these are slides that you've seen in June. The priorities on these slides haven't changed since June. Some of the numbers have been updated, as I mentioned, but these hopefully will look familiar to you. And again, as we get through them, happy to take your questions. All of the state agencies, as we prepare our budgets and submit our requests, our items for special consideration are in alignment with the Governor's three-year plan priorities. We've talked about these. We do have alignment in all the enhancements that you'll see, the items for special consideration you'll see. And so this is the main slide for today. These are the system-wide items for special consideration, our enhancement requests for your... For our system request for the Governor's Office. These are in a priority order that was... This is the same order you saw them in in June. This is a priority order that was established through the collaboration with the campus input. So the campuses provided input on these recommendations. That was then summarized, reviewed with the business officers, and then shared by the business officers with the Presidents and brought to you in this order in June. A couple items on this list, we are optimistic we'll be able to take off our list, because they may come in another way. So in the Governor's Office, we know that statewide, all agencies are having a lot of trouble with utility inflation. We have it as our number-three priority. There's a... We are waiting and optimistic the Governor's Office will apply a statewide utility inflation factor that will allow us to take our request off, because it'll become another base adjustment that they provide. We have to have it here currently, because that inflation's not reflected in our adjusted base that we reviewed earlier. Another item on here, you heard earlier, the Joint Committee for Education proposed bill draft related to fee waivers. Should there be support for fee waiver funding from another avenue, then we can remove that request from our request list. Some of these items are here, and again, even you'll see some on the institution-specific where, you know, these are items that may be of interest in other priorities in the state, other agencies, shared interests. So there's possibility that things, while they're on our list, to make sure folks are aware of them, they may find a funding path through another agency. The next few slides you've seen before, these are just summarizing those same items that you saw on the prior slide, and I will have them here in case you want to stop for questions on any of them as we go. The number-one and number-two priority were the safety, campus safety, system-wide. First item being, we listed as one-shot. Those are facility and technology and equipment enhancements, so they're investments in infrastructure. The second-line item is recurring costs, primarily in the form of additional increased staffing at the two commands, North and South.
Chair Carvalho, this is Regent Brown.
Yes, please go ahead.
I couldn't get off mute on the previous slide. I was wondering if we could back up one. I just had a question, because I was looking at the... It says the athletic equity line, and where we have been talking a lot about this, like how do we make things more equitable and stuff like that? But I'd like to actually dig into this a little bit, because when I look at... I'm assuming this is scholarships and things like that. Is that correct?
Regent Brown, yes. I'll answer, and I'll invite the campuses if they'd like to elaborate, or if I happen to... If I misspeak. This request initiated as a request from UNR, recognizing that the UNR and UNLV athletic specific appropriations were not the same. So the first, the equity reference in the description was to bring the UNR intercollegiate athletics appropriation up to the same level as the UNLV appropriation. Both campuses have had interest and concern with requesting additional scholarship support for their athletic programs. And so UNLV was also interested in this request. And with UNLV increasing or adding a request, that brought UNR's request up to maintain equity again. I see folks came up. I don't know if that answers your question.
I just wanted to... And yeah, thank you. That is actually really helpful for me. And where I support, you know, asking for more scholarships, I think that's a big driver for our two R1 institutions. But when I look at the population size and the amount of students, when I look at UNR, and they have 33% less students than UNLV, our athletic scholarships need to reflect that as well. And I don't know if the student athletes are the same, but when I look at equity, I look at enrollment numbers and then making it equitable from that, not equitable across the board. It's not apples-to-apples. And that's just... And I think I've said this a couple of times, where we look at the population growth of our state, when we look at where institutions are moving. And then when we come down to the budget, our budget doesn't actually reflect the reality of what we're seeing. And I just think this is just one of those lines where it's like, I want to give student athletes more scholarships and allow our institutions that, but when we look at just purely population enrollment numbers, and I mean, we can go back to the weighted student credits, you know, when UNLV is adding 60,000 weighted student credit hours and UNR is losing 1,100, you know, like the numbers just don't add up to then this line and a couple of other lines, where it just needs to always be quote-unquote equitable, because it feels equitable when it... It's... You know, it's like it's interesting to say equitable when it looks good on paper, but it's not equitable in every other sense, because there's just differences in enrollment numbers.
Regent Brown, we have the Vice Presidents for Finance from both UNR, Andrew Klinger and Casey Wyman from UNLV. If you have specific questions, we can invite them up to the podium.
Can I make a comment first?
I don't know. Oh, yeah.
Sure. Regent Del Carlo.
I may not be right, and I'm hoping you'll answer this question, but I think that athletic departments are the same size, students-wise. They're very close to each other. Am I correct?
Mr. Klinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, for the record, Andrew Klinger, Vice President of Administration and Finance, through you to Regent Del Carlo. That's exactly right. This is not... The funding for athletics is not determined by overall enrollment. We have the same number of sports programs. We have the same number of athletes. So we have the same number of scholarships and that sort of thing. And so in our research in putting this request together, up until fiscal year 2008, the two athletic programs were virtually identical in state funding. And so in 2008, that funding changed, and I couldn't figure out why. And so ever since 2008, there's been this $2.5 million annual difference between the two athletic programs. And so our request was to bring that to parity with between both athletic programs, between UNLV and UNR, because we have the same number of athletes within our programs.
Thank you. Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow up on that, Mr. Klinger, that's a great thing Regent Brown brought up. Now, are you telling me that they're the same number of athletes in both programs, but one gets double the amount that the other gets? Why is that? And even though, you know, the numbers... Am I lost with numbers somewhere?
Madam Chair, for the record, Andrew Klinger, through you to Regent Boylan. I don't think it's double, but it's a $2.5 million difference. And so what you're seeing here is a two-year number. So the reason it's 10 million is 5 million of that. And again, that's over two years, was to close the gap between the two athletic programs. The other 5 million was to provide additional scholarships for students at both institutions.
Okay. That's good, but I'm still lost. If they're both equal, you know, I'm a simple man. I ask simple questions. They're both equal, you say, but one gets more than the other? Why?
That is correct, sir.
I see you saying yes, and the two guys behind you saying no, and I'm like, what the fudge is going on? Yes and no, no, yes?
For the record, Casey Wyman, CFO, UNLV. So we're bringing the levels up together, but UNLV had asked for an additional 5 million, so we're making up the difference, and then also including the additional 5 million for student athletes. So UNLV asked for 5 million, and then UNR in conjunction was like, well, we need to bring them up to the same levels. And so that's why that makeup is different on this one. After this is approved, we're at the same level from a student financial perspective. So this is the corrective year to bring it to the same level, whereas before it was offset.
That's why I never got into finance, and all you guys are good. You confuse me like crazy. You're better than the lawyers. They confuse me enough, but you guys are awesome. I mean, they're good. I mean, don't get me wrong. I've got three of them in this room today. I'm scared. All right. Go ahead, sir.
I think President Sandoval wanted to respond as well.
Madam Chair, to you and through to Regent Boylan, I want to make sure you understand, because it is... It's pretty simple. Since 2008 is, Mr. Klinger said, and I don't know why, and I wish I had found out sometime between 2011 and 2019, but there was, and respectfully, I don't think there's anything but... The UNLV athletic program received $2.5 million more than the UNR program. And so this request is simply... And there are the same amount of athletes at both schools. So this request is simply to make them equal.
Thank you, President Sandoval. You see, you use the magic word there, "simple." With me, "simple" is just... Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Vitale, before we move on, since we kind of went into this... Oh, Regent Brown, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so sorry if you don't mind.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, if you don't mind. And I do understand that, but I am looking at this from like a 30,000-foot view, because we talk about equity, and we talk about equality, and like, those are not the same thing. And then we have to actually look at this from a system perspective as well. What about TMCC? What about CSN? I know Nevada State is exploring theirs. Like, when we're looking at the budgets and wanting to be retroactive, to make it even, to give more money to these line items, we have to consider the holistic thing. And so I just... I'm sorry, but it will always come down to population size for me, because, one, it's where the money is coming from, it's where we need to be spending, it's where the trends are happening, and like, the budgets never seem to reflect that. And so if I have to just stand by myself for the next year while we go through the legislative process, I will do that, but that's where I'm at. And if we don't start looking at the other institutions where they're growing as well, like, I'm... Yeah, this is just where I'm at now, and I actually don't think... Unfortunately, I can't stay for the rest of this conversation, but I just wanted to bring that up, because when I look at these line items, it does not sit well with me.
Thank you, Regent Brown, for your comments. As I was... I appreciate those comments, and I'm sorry I cut you off, but since we went back to this, I was going to bring this up in the institutional priorities, but I think that this is a good break in the same vein. I've had questions about graduate student stipends. I know that came forward to us as something that between sessions was a priority, but that's... We don't see that within this priority list. And I was wondering if our representatives from UNLV and UNR might be able to, you know, clarify why those aren't on this list as well.
Madam Chair, for the record, Andrew Klinger, Vice President of Administration and Finance. And as we went through the process of preparing for the visit from the Chancellor and her staff in January, we did solicit input from the faculty, the students, and this is not an item, at least during our process of asking for feedback from the students. This is not an item that came up on the list. There were other priorities that came up, food insecurity, housing, those sorts of things. So I'm sure it is a priority for them, but it wasn't something that rose to the top of their list.
Thank you for that response, and I apologize for putting you on the spot there. Just came up to me recently as well. Not sure if UNLV has a response to that. If not, we can, we can move on. Mr. Wyman, thank you.
For the record, Casey Wyman, sorry about the delay there. I just wanted to confirm. So we did poll our graduate students to determine the priority. They prioritize safety and security over that. And therefore, that was our priority for this request.
Thank you. I appreciate that response as well. And again, apologies for just throwing that at you at the last minute. Thank you. Regent Perkins also has a question.
Thank you. I was a little bit late on. Thank you. I guess I was looking for the, like, UNR's extension. Is there, is that included in this budget, or is that in another budget?
The cooperative extension is an example of the non-formula budgets that is on the other, on the early page. So they're, they're in the numbers. They're not called out individually in, in those budget slides, in the base, the base building slides. But they're, they're rolled up in the other non-formula budget line.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Vatone?
So these are priorities three and four on that list. Student, food and housing insecurity and mental health resources. And again, going back to the other slide, you can see the distribution by campuses, how those were, how those came through. Other common items, nursing expansion. Both UNR and UNLV medical schools have been working on proposals and have requested for expansion of the medical residency programs at both, at both institutions. The Go-Head-Win Funds is another example of an item that is on our list to make sure it doesn't get overlooked in the process. We do expect that likely that that is funded directly to Go-Head as it was in the last session. But with us, with the system applying for awards through that process. But, and again, I mentioned this item, the unfunded fee waivers, the largest programs in there. This, this item, I think, to clarify, just to make sure that we, that we're, that the request is clear. This is for legislatively required mandated fee waivers that are not funded. So these don't, this does not include any fee waivers that are authorized by the board that are not part of the legislature's purview. These are the required mandated legislative fee waivers, primarily being the Nevada National Guard. That's actually your largest, your largest fee waiver program. And then the Native American program that expanded with the 23-session legislation. Again, there's a, there's a small level of base funding in there. But as you saw in our request with the IFC earlier this year, there's additional, additional experience in the fee waivers at the campuses that, that has not been funded. And we expect those programs to grow. Couple other items, DRI cloud seating. I actually pulled that forward. It's not on that system-wide priority list, because it is unique to DRI. But it is an item that, that aligns with the governor's priorities. And, and we do understand this one similarly may come forward through the Division of Natural Resources. So it may be an item that the system won't need to request, but can be funded through that agency's request. And then several of the campuses expanding their prison education programs. The next two slides, I mentioned, the first slide is your system-wide priorities, where there's common interest across the campuses in particular initiatives. The next two slides just summarize for you those campus-specific items that were included in their requests. The ranking process I mentioned earlier focused only on the system-wide items, and that's all we've asked you to rank. These items are not ranked. They're just included in the system's requests. And the way the budget, the way the budgets are entered into the system at the state level, all those system-wide ranking, ranked items are ranked as the 1 through 12, 1 through 13 priority. All of these items are ranked only by the campuses at their individual budget account levels. So they're not, they're not ranked at this level.
Regent DelCarlo.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. So I looked at that slide, and I saw that student advising, they're asking for 1,008 at CSN. And I heard James McCoy, Provost Thompson, and there was one other, do an NPR interview. Oh, yes, Provost Heavy. And they, you know, this board mandated student advising at 350 to 1 a long time ago. And I don't know where the campuses are, but I know that James McCoy said that they were at 675 to 1, because they didn't have enough advising. So is this 1.8 million request going to get CSN to that point? And so if that answer to that, James, is yes, then I'm assuming GBC, TMCC, and WNC are at 350 to 1. I'd just like to know that, because that was a big thing on this board for a long time. Thanks.
Thank you for that question. James McCoy, Vice President for Academic Affairs, for the record. Thank you for listening to that session on KNPR with my colleague, Chris Heavy. You're absolutely right, Regent DelCarlo. I have the numbers actually right now based on real headcount for Fall 2023 at CSN, which came in at 27,649 students. And at that time, our student-to-advising ratio was 564 to 1. And that does not include the 10,000 or so non-credit students who are at CSN. And so indeed, if we were to get to the 350 to 1, which we're all striving for, this, this budgetary item would bring us 30 new academic advisors to hit the magic spot of 350 to 1. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much. So you're, if with that request, you'll get 30 new academic, oh, that's wonderful.
That's right. Thank you.
Oh, my, that's nice. Thank.
Madam Chair.
Please, Regent Ariscata.
We do have some comments from the presidents up here in the Northern Nevada region.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good morning. Kyle Dalby, Western Nevada College, to answer the question by Regent DelCarlo. We were actually at a solid 350 to 1 before last year, when we bolted up in enrollment by 17%. And now it's drifted into more of the 450 to 500 to 1. We do expect some rebalance on enrollment, and we do build in advisors with our student access fees. So for, at this point in time, we are not, that's why we are not asking for additional money here. But we, we, the ratio is, is a little bit out of skew right now, only because of the rapid enrollment increase last year. We expect, when the weighted student credit hour formula kicks in, we will be able to use some of those funds to expand the one or two that we need to keep up with that growth.
Thank you. President Donelli.
For the record, Dr. Amber Donelli, President, Great Basin College. You know, our enrollment was down last year, but we've had significant enrollment this year. Our advisors do a fantastic job at all of our sites. Right now, our enrollment is up 17%. And so, Regent DelCarlo, we are probably exceeding that, which is a good thing. That 1 to 350 at this point, and could probably add an additional advisor. But right now, what we have is based off of what our average enrollment was probably the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to give President Hilgerson the opportunity, if she'd like to also comment.
Karen Hilgerson, for the record. First of all, I'd like to say that when the board issued that appropriate direction for presidents and colleges, I think it really triggered a lot of inspirational and innovative thinking at TMCC, because we realized we couldn't simply afford to hire more professional advisors. But we also realized that there might be a better way that could meet the board directive, but also improve the overall experience for students. So I'm happy to report that we did close in on a 350. Now that said, our enrollments are going up very quickly right now, too. So I, I need to give you a better snapshot in a few weeks. But we have an advising model that relies on our approximately 10, I believe, professional advisors. But that's, they're, all that they spend their, their time on with students, and they do an amazing job. And they also work with a growing number of faculty who are given some release time to also engage with the advisors and do some advising for their discipline-specific students. I'm happy to report that because of this, we have closed in on that 350 ratio. But not only that, I think our model is very effective. And I think it's one of the explanations for why we see greater numbers of students returning. So our retention numbers are also increasing. So this is marvelous news. And a faculty member just the other day, a department chair, said, you know, I think one of the reasons more of our students are returning in his program is because the faculty in that program are enhancing what advisors do and really encouraging the students in their disciplines, the disciplines that they love and are passionate about, to finish their program of study. So we have a wonderful new model. It'll be fun to see it continue to mature and develop. And I'm grateful to the board for setting the direction a few years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Vatone.
And so I'll just take a moment, because I probably should have mentioned both on the first priority slide and on this one. And before I get to the next one, all of these priority slides are presented to you in two-year numbers. So this is the biennial total. These are not annual amounts. Next slide, that's, the last slide was the two-year institutions. These are your four-year institutions in Desert Research. And again, these are the campus-specific priorities that would be within their budget accounts. I know you can see on the UNLV slide, for example, there's a couple that were related to the law school that you heard about in there, in the public comment earlier today. But I'll just pause here in case you have any questions on these items. I know the campuses are available to answer those.
I have one question specific to UNLV's priorities. There is an item, immersive learning. I was wondering, is that related to Dreamscape? Or is that another initiative that UNLV has?
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Answer is yes. It is both to be able to try to do some backfilling in terms of making sure that we have the additional lab fees that go along with the Dreamscape piece, which that's essentially what that is, is it's kind of a supplemental piece of instruction, as well as we're trying to do other things relative to immersive learning. If you get a chance to go by the lead library, what you'll see is, is that, I don't know how old they are, but we actually have green screen rooms and, and places for people to be able to create content. That is one of the biggest things, is both for faculty and for students to be able to create their own content. And so that funding, in part, is going to be, to be able to supplement that. But as well as those possible course fees that will come up, we don't want to put them on the students. We want to be able to, to work out some things and make sure that ultimately, when, we, we probably will have to move some of those. And it's that classes will change, like Biology 101. Hopefully someday, we'll, we'll have a good portion of their courses taught with a lab that is immersive learning. And so right now, students pay for that. What we want to try to do is to ease them into that by starting off and having some coverage for that, so that's not put on students.
Thank you. I have a question from Regent Ariscata.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And President Whitfield, while you're answering that question so well, can you also expand on the K-12 teacher pipeline for 41 million?
Chair Carvalho, through you to Regent Ariscata. I finally did that right. Let me give you just little bits and pieces of it. One of the biggest pieces of that is the Teacher Pathway Program. And, and just to double down on what Chris Vatone said, this is for two years, that, that amount that you're seeing is for, is for the entire biennium. And the Teacher Pathway Program accounts for maybe 34 million. Getting it off there, maybe 32 million of that. The Teacher Pathway Program is a program that was instituted maybe three years ago now, that allows people that are already in the Clark County school system to be able to add to, if they had an associate's degree, maybe they had some credits, and allows them to be able to finish a degree so that they can then become teachers. I may have the numbers ever so slightly off, but they just graduated in one of their first classes, and it was 143. As we look at the deficit of teachers that we have in Clark County, that's almost the ability to get to probably 20% of what that deficit is. And so it's a, it's a way to find a different pathway to increase the number of teachers that are coming in. The benefit of it is, is that those folks are really already dedicated to the Clark County school system, because they've been there and been working. And they were, you know, just, just that much, that far away from being able to become a teacher, be in the classroom. And so that's what that program is. Part of those costs really is to cover the cost of tuition, so that we're, we're not putting all of that onus on teachers to be able to come back, potential teachers to come back. It's really one that then we're providing the cost of that instruction.
Thank you.
I'm in the queue. Chair, Cruz Crawford.
Yes, Regent Cruz Crawford.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. I did also want to share with that PPP program that is 41 million. It's probably like, wow, that's a lot of money. That is a result of what my doctoral research was. And what we did is identify gaps in the state. And we're also working on nursing pathways. And what we identified is that the paraprofessionals were making less than minimum wage. And they were also relying on a lot of social services that we paid for as a state. So even though it sounds like a lot of money, once they get into the profession in a licensed position, they actually become also homeowners, pay more taxes, and get off of our state-funded social services. So it's really a win for the state in regard to collecting state taxes. And my pride and joy is that it really has increased the teacher demographics, so that our teachers are more representative of our state demographics. So that is an amazing program, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me see now. I keep getting mixed up. Oh, yeah, the TNM Legal Clinic, $2 million, right? Now, is that $2 million spent on that clinic per year?
All, all the numbers on the slide are two-year numbers.
Two years, so 1 million. So what are we spending that 1 million on? We have the building, we have a law school that has professors. And who are we, where's that 1 million going for one year for this? Again, TNM Legal Clinic. Where does that money go for whom? Sorry, huh? We have the dean coming up. Outstanding.
Good morning, everyone. Leah Chan-Greenwald, Dean of the Boyd School of Law. Thank you for that question, Regent Boylan. This would be an enhancement to the Thomas and Mack Legal Clinic. And so we would have, hopefully, an additional $1 million per year to be able to expand on our clinics. So currently, we operate about five to six clinics throughout the academic year. And this provides legal, free legal services to the wider community. And you heard this morning from a number of our students, just recent grads, as well as a current student, who are working in the clinic. So we provide, you know, survivor's representation. We provide immigration, legal services. And so we currently spend, you know, between the current state appropriation and the gift fund that we do have from, that initially established the Thomas and Mack Legal Clinic, named after the Thomas and Mack families, we currently spend approximately, you know, a million plus every year, every academic year. So this would really provide a nice boost to the clinic to be able to expand.
I see. But where is that money spent?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Who are we paying, or where's that money going? I mean, if it's coming out of my pocket, and I want to sue this big guy here, and I come to you, and I'm like, where's that money going, $1 million?
Absolutely. So most of the funds go to faculty who are full-time faculty members who teach the students. So this is a teaching clinic. It's to educate our law students to then become attorneys in these fields. So the, a good bulk of the funds go to that. Another good bulk goes to the operating costs of running a law firm. It's like running a small business. You know, there are costs related to court filing fees, travel sometimes for the attorneys. You know, they might have to travel if they have a case, you know, up north. You know, they might have to travel if they have a case, you know, up north, for example, right? And we need to send the faculty member and the students to go around the state to service the clients. Because we really do try to serve all of Nevada with the clinic.
Well, that's nice. So it's at UNLV, but you serve the whole state.
That's correct.
And UNR doesn't have something like this?
No, UNR does not have a law school.
They don't have a law school. Thank you so much. See, I'm getting hungry here. So $1 million is spent on, let's say, the regular instructors, professors. They become adjunct while they're teaching in this place, right?
So our faculty who direct our clinics are full-time, tenure-track faculty members.
University members.
They're university full-time employees.
But then they get paid extra to work in the clinic?
No, that is what they do on a full-time basis. They work, they are hired and choose to teach as part of their teaching load, course load. They teach the clinic. Because the clinic is a teaching, they run it as a class as well as services. So during a week, for example, they'll have a seminar, a two-to-three-hour seminar with the students to talk about the cases that they might be running, the law related to that. And then during the week, they supervise the students as they're meeting with their clients, like, just like any other law firm or small business would.
Outstanding. That is so interesting. I'm glad, I'm glad. Thank you, ma'am. I'm glad you came here. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I may also add that it appears on this priority list that it is backed by an Assembly Bill, AB 328. So there may be some requirement that these services are offered based on that bill from the Assembly. Is my assumption. You may want to clarify that.
Leah Chan-Greenwald, for the record. So the AB 328 had provided one-shot funding for the clinic to allow us to expand in our services. And this would hopefully replace it and then expand it some more.
Thank you for that clarification.
I didn't say abracadabra. Okay, come on. I didn't say thank you to ma'am. That's really interesting stuff that you have. Then you've been with the school now for three years?
I'm going into my third year.
Third year. I remember your name. Yes, right, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regent Perkins.
Um, thank you. I'm going to take it back to the College of Ed. Dr. Whitfield was very modest. That K-12 teacher pipeline is nationally recognized, and it's one of the better programs across the nation. So accolades to that program. And I would love to see it keep going and expand.
Thank you. Mr. Vatone, we'll go back to you.
With that, I'll move on to this next section. And I'll apologize in advance that this slide's titled Higher Ed Formula Recommendations. I'm not presenting recommendations today, as I mentioned earlier. I have a couple of slides here just summarizing a little bit about the committee. But as I mentioned, we have now scheduled for your September quarterly meeting a full presentation on the committee's work and bringing those recommendations forward. So just a quick overview. The committee, as you know, this committee began its work in the fall of '23. It is a chancellor's ad hoc committee, but it is, was comprised of representatives from yourselves, the Porter Regents, in addition to appointments that came from the governor's office, the Senate and Assembly, the chancellor being a voting member, and a couple of chancellor appointments that came in with expertise in the area of diversity and inclusion. In addition to those voting members, there were advisory members made up from the governor's office and your system institutions and system administration. Just to highlight, recalling the timeline with the committee first meeting back in November and finishing its work just last month in July. And as I mentioned, you received the report earlier this week. That was, that was, there was a lot of work completed in a short amount of time. And again, you'll get the full presentation at the next meeting. And I hope by then you'll also have had the opportunity to review the report. That report was transmitted to the, it was also transmitted to the governor. Slide says by August 31st. It was actually transmitted the same, that same day to the governor's office and the Legislative Council Bureau on behalf of the legislature. And as I mentioned, we'll be back in a couple of weeks with a presentation.
Thank you. So at this time, are there any other questions or comments from Regents regarding the biennial state operating budget request?
Motion to approve.
I'll take Regent McMichael's motion, and I'll take a second.
I'll second that, Regent Downs.
I've got a second from Regent Perkins, and then I will go to Regent DelCarlo.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. I think having the funding formula that three of us Regents were on, I think it really helped us put together our budget this time. Because we've, since I've been on the board, this is what, my fifth, at least fifth budget? We've never asked for, gone and asked for all these other things. But I think we had enough people there, the two senators, the two Assembly people. Then, of course, our chair was outstanding, our former Supreme Court Justice. He really got it. And, and so I was really pleased, because I was very disheartened, I have to say, during many of the meetings. Because I, when we were told upfront, there'd be no new money, no new money, no. I mean, it was pounded in us. So we're just arranging the deck chairs, really. Because someone's going to win, someone's going to lose. But I think what came out of all this is really good stuff that you obviously have taken forward because we should never have unfunded mandates for the National Guard for the Native American students. And I think they finally are realizing some of these things. So I just want to applaud you and your work, and you interim Chancellor Patty Charlton. Because I think it's, we're in the best shape telling our story. And this is what this is about. And so I'm really hoping you rely on all of us on this board to help tell that story at the next legislative session. Because I really felt like the last session was all about K-12. They got an extra 250 million. And I know they got it. I see the national averages. But, you know, we've needed some things too. So I have to say, now, I'm hopeful. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Regent DelCarlo. I would echo those. And I also want to extend a thank you to the three Regents, you, Regent Brooks, and Regent Goodman for being on that committee. It's been, I know that it was, we don't get paid a lot for what we do. And to add on to that is admirable, and I appreciate your efforts on that board. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? So I will take a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I will take a break. We have lunch for Regents, presidents, and cabinet. We will come back at noon. Thank you. Okay, we'll get started with item number five. Northwest Campus Capital Planning Progress Update for CSN. So for this item, I will go to College of Southern Nevada Acting President William Kibler, who will present an update on advanced planning efforts conducted to date associated with the development of the first building on the CSN Northwest Campus. And apologies if you were in mid-chew.
I took care of that very quickly. Well, Chair Carvalho, thank you so much. William Kibler, for the record. This is a project that's been ongoing for a while. It felt like we were kind of overdue to give you all an update because there has been much work that's been taking place. I just walked into this project about six and a half weeks ago. So in acknowledging that, James McCoy is going to make this presentation. He's been integrally involved. He's been a co-chair of this project from the beginning. So James McCoy, our Vice President for Academic Affairs, is actually going to present the slideshow to you and provide the overview.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kibler, and Chair Carvalho. And Regents, I appreciate the opportunity. Chancellor, thank you for the opportunity to present what we have all seen at the Northwest Sector of our Valley as this sign on the screen, "The Future Home of the Northwest Campus." It's been there over two decades, I believe, at this point in time. We also took a cue, Regents, from you when you have asked us to make sure as institutions that we don't get ahead of you, that we keep you informed on all of our projects as we go. And so this opportunity is to do just that. As we had done with our Center of Excellence for Advanced Manufacturing, there was a comment a couple of board meetings ago that you appreciated that incremental update as we moved. And so we've designed a modest presentation for you today. And we look forward to your questions either as we go or certainly at the end, whichever you prefer. Again, my name is Dr. James McCoy. I serve as the Vice President of Academic Affairs at the College of Southern Nevada, for the record. So today, in the next 20 or so minutes, our goal is to provide to you the vision for the first building and the initial land development at the Northwest Campus site, describe who's been a part of the planning team, members from the community and CSN. We'll talk about the project planning timeline. We'll talk about the current planning efforts in partnership with State Public Works and the architectural firm. We'll talk about the financial resources that have been committed to the planning phase of this project to date. We'll talk about the total estimated funding needed to commence and continue and build out this first experience on that campus. And then we'll talk about the immediate next steps. For the vision. As we thought about what the very first building ought to look like in terms of the programming, we thought about the workforce industry sectors that are in desperate need in Nevada. And this board, you've contemplated these very ideas many times. We've talked a lot as a state about the need for nursing. We've talked a lot about the need for cybersecurity professionals and teachers. Another one of the areas that is in dramatic need is in the areas of public safety and public services. And if there are events in December, weren't any telling of that, then we missed something, right? The idea that we can bring and train together law enforcement professionals, grow our own in Nevada to the extent that we need them, more of them, and certainly in the areas around fire, EMS, and paramedic. And so I'll talk with you a little bit about what a true center of excellence in public safety means in the context of College of Southern Nevada and in higher education in general. So the vision is to build just this first building on what will become, over probably decades, a multi-building campus, a comprehensive campus, akin to what we've seen at Charleston and North Las Vegas and Henderson. This board has been presented over the years with this idea that our Northwest Sector of the Valley is one of the largest, fastest-growing areas of our town, yet access to higher education has been extremely limited in this area of our valley. In years past, CSN has presented heat maps to show you where students are traveling to get to a higher education facility. And in some cases, that travel commute time exceeds 45 minutes. In fact, if you look at the bus lines, in some cases, that travel time goes three or four hours. And so to bring higher education into the Northwest Sector of our Valley through this first building phase, and consequently, over the decade to come, more buildings and more access to higher education will be super important. So we had to settle on what the first building was going to look like in terms of programming. And that essentially is going to be the Center of Excellence for Public Safety with the first phase of development looking at locating our CSN Southern Desert Regional Police Academy. This academy of CSNs is in partnership with all of the regional police agencies who do not run their own capacity for police training, to get future officers post-certified, to get them their badge, to get them prepared for the agency so that they can do their on-the-job training, and then they're off to the races serving and protecting our communities. As most of you, I think, know, Regents, we operate the Southern Desert Regional Police Academy and have so for the last couple of decades, currently sitting at our Water Street location in downtown Henderson. I'll talk about what that means right now because right now, we're currently leasing that building for $408,000 a year. So you can imagine, we want to get out of the leasing business, and we want to get back into the space where we own and operate classrooms. In addition to the Southern Desert Police Academy, we're also contemplating an EVOC course, an Emergency Vehicle Operator course. I'm going to describe more about what that means in a moment as well. And it's important, as I said, that this first sort of flagship building on this campus also provides an opportunity for folks who aren't engaged in pathways around public safety, but to find a home and access point to CSN. And so you'll see in some of the schematics today that we've accounted in this first building for general education courses so that students in that area can get their mathematics and their English and their history, et cetera. And then, of course, when you're opening up a brand-new footprint and you're offering a complete program, such as our law enforcement program, we need to make sure that we have the appropriate access to student support services and library access accreditation requirements. And so you'll see in these schematics, in this first building, there's an element for that as well. For those of you who may not have seen this land or been visited by this, or visited this land in some time, I have a short video to give you a sense of where this parcel is located. Take a look. You recognize that land? When they first signed it up all those years ago, there was nothing really around it. And as the board talked about a couple of board meetings ago, that parcel of land now is surrounded by highly commercialized and highly residential areas, no doubt as that sector of our valley has grown. So we're excited to have made the progress that we have made to date, and we look forward to continuing the conversation to come. As you know, the legislature last session appropriated some planning dollars associated with this project, to get this project off the ground and to get it planned. That was to the tune of $4.5 million. In doing so, we've worked closely with the State Public Works. An architecture firm was identified and have been working diligently through the initial programming phase of this project. Additionally, a CMAR, or Construction Manager at Risk, was identified, Penta, and a Community Advisory Board for the programming for what would this building look like if it were to be a true center of excellence in terms of what is inside and how it operates, was generated. This next slide showcases sort of the membership roster of who's been involved in this project from a programming standpoint. And as you'll see, every city municipality and county, agency from law enforcement to fire to EMS to ambulance services are represented on this group, in this group. The reason that's important to us is because we need to make sure that what we're producing for graduates from this first experience are aligned to careers and are ready for careers that these employers are going to be looking for. An overall project design schedule to give you a sense on what we've been up to since about March in terms of this planning and the appropriation from the state. The programming phase of this project began in March and finished in May. The programming phase is quite simple. We bring in subject-met or experts from among our faculty in the areas of EMS and law enforcement and criminal justice. We bring in members from our advisory committee that you've just seen, and we visualize. We dream. We talk about what needs to be in this building from a programming perspective. So that has finished. The programming phase is done. When that was finished, we brought that programming phase information to our advisory committee. And we gave our advisory group the opportunity to reflect and to make any final suggestions as it relates to that phase of the project. In June, the project moved into schematic design phase with the architecture firm and the State Public Works. And that's when they begin to put onto paper the layout of what the visioning session of programming would lead to. That schematic design phase is just about done. Another couple of days. In another couple of days, we'll be entering into the design element where much more of the architectural planning will begin. And we'll engage in that process through to December, where we get into the final design development through the turn of the new calendar year. I promise you, I'll talk a little bit more about that EVOC track, the Emergency Vehicle Operations Track. So for context, what you're seeing here is an aerial shot of the land. On the left-hand side is future campus development. That will go untouched right now. It'll stay the desert landscape that it is. And on the right-hand side, just adjacent to Durango there, that cuts the two, cuts the parcel of land into two, is where the Center of Excellence for Public Safety will be. On the bottom of your screen, you see two white squares, one larger, one smaller. It's the larger of those two squares on the bottom in that sort of yellow highlighted area. That is the 60,000-square-foot Center of Excellence for Public Safety in addition to the general education and student support and library services that this first building needs to house. And we've designed the building And we've designed the building with the ability to be able to expand it to include the ultimate vision over the next several bienniums, we believe, to include EMS, fire, and paramedic as well, so that we're not having to go back to the planning dialogue, because we understand that when we bring law enforcement, fire, EMS training, dispatcher training, et cetera, all around the same area for education and training, then that indeed they can work together when they're out there in the real field as well. Now, I mentioned the EVOC course. Our Community Advisory Board, made up of agency leaders from across the valley, have indicated to us, in fact, this was their number-one priority, that if you build an EVOC course, if you build a course where emergency vehicle operation training can occur, it will be used by all the agencies. So we see this as an opportunity to not only continue to partner with all of our agencies, even those that have their own police academies, but also as an opportunity for revenue generation. It's an opportunity to ultimately perhaps contribute back to the building envisioning for this project. It'll be a state-of-the-art experience. Our agency partners actually helped in the design of what the EVOC course ought to look like, how long it needs to be, what the curvatures of the course are, et cetera. So that's what you see there on that plot of land. To adjacent to the right there, you see plenty of parking, and you see future development in terms of central plant space, as well as future, future development that the agency partners ask that we consider. And that's in the context of an indoor firing range for law enforcement training across the valley. It'll be the first of its kind in Southern Nevada, as well as a scenario village training to support not only our police academy and the agencies that are in it, but also others. These next two slides I'll breeze through fairly quickly. You have them in your reference materials. This is the first snapshot of the initial schematic design that our architectural firm pointed out. What's important when you look at this design, it's a two-story building. This one is the first floor, and you see the instructional space proportion. You see the administrative space, the faculty space, the general education circulation, and how much of the schematic design is tied to LITA or our Law Enforcement Training Academy, and how much is designed as part of the main building for student support services, general education, et cetera. So as you're looking at it, to your left is sort of the main footprint where all students that are coming to CSN will gain access to education and programming and support. And on the right, much more secured environment for our folks who are engaged in law enforcement training. You also see our student services footprint here on the bottom left, to make sure that we're providing the advising that Regent Del Carlo was referencing earlier, as well as financial aid support, registration support, and those sorts of things. On the second floor of the schematic design, on the right-hand side, you see the continuation of programming for our Law Enforcement Training Academy. And on the left-hand side, you see the general education course programs, classrooms, that are built in to this planning phase. Let's talk a little bit about the financial resources. And Rolando Mosqueda, our interim Vice President for Finance Administration, is in the room as well, if you've got specific questions. But we wanted to make sure that you understood that not only did the Nevada Legislature appropriate $4.5 million to help engage in this planning process, but CSN has also contributed almost the exact same amount, initially a $1.1 million contribution, and then an additional $3.377 million to get this project in planning to 100% construction document-ready by the time the legislative session ends. So we will be ready, should the legislature opt to appropriate the funds necessary for this capital project, we will be ready to hit the ground running with shovels in the The estimated construction costs, as validated by the State Public Works, are categorized on the screen in front of you now. There's much, much more detail, but for the purpose of simplicity, today, we brought this into some of these categories. I understand $155 million, or what is perceived to be one building, seems like a lot, but it's not one building. The actual building cost, this is really, really important, the actual building cost for the 60,000 or so square-foot building is $62,400. But when you begin to think about that plot of land having zero development, and this being the first flagship building, the first building, the first piece of development on that land, we have to take into consideration, we need to prepare the land for development. You've got curbing, you've got utility pools, you've got all those infrastructure onsite improvements and offsite improvements to be kosher with the neighborhood by which the campus will be occupying. And so you see that central plant space of coming in just shy of $5 million. You see the onsite improvements coming in at $12.6 million, the offsite improvements at $6.5 million, that EVOC track coming in at $15 million. And then the additional estimated project cost of $53 million are things such as soil analysis, material testing services, the CMAR pre-construction services, the project management inspection services, third-party commissioning, FFNE design work, all those sort of professional service components. And then it also includes a lot around things like utility offsite costs, utility connection fees, data telecom wiring, of course, the FFNE, the furnishing and fixtures and equipment, roof maintenance agreements, local government requirement fees, et cetera. So rather than trying to push all 90 of those fees onto one slide, I opted to co-opt them into the additional estimated project cost. But if you're interested in those details, we have them ready for you. So in terms of the immediate next steps, as you know, this board prioritized this project among your CIP projects, and we're incredibly grateful for that prioritization. The System Office, as you know, as Chris Paton mentioned, and the Chancellor has reinforced, will be taking the CIP projects to the State Public Works, and this is one of those projects that the State Public Works Board will hear on August 28th or August 29th. I want to acknowledge our CSN Foundation for a moment, and Danita Simmons, our Executive Director, is in the room. The CSN Foundation has committed to engaging in a capital campaign for this project so that we can ultimately braid funding with whatever the state is willing to appropriate, with some homegrown philanthropic support as well, in addition to the millions that CSN has already put in from our own budget. So thank you to the CSN Foundation. They're set to meet in September to discuss what their target goals are. We're happy to bring that back to you once they've made those determinations. As I mentioned earlier, the schematic design phase will finish up here in just a few days, and the design development begins in September. And again, the goal is to be shovel-ready with 100% of the construction documents, ready to go by the end of June of 2025. So with that, Chair Carvalho, I'll end my presentation and take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCoy. I have a question from Regent Boylan, and then Regent Del Carlo.
Thank you. That was great. We've been talking about this one since I've been on the board. It's a long time, and I thank you for the drone, because I can look at a map, it seems believing. So my question is going to be, how are you going to get over to the other side and cross? Is that Durango? Yeah, Durango, real busy street. We've got the Boring Company doing all kinds of stuff here in Vegas. Are you guys looking at doing the Boring Company to go under Durango so you can have your campus whole?
Wouldn't that be something?
Hey, if you dream it, you can do it.
Sure. Thank you for that question, Regent Del Carlo. And on this first phase of the planning, we're not developing that side of Durango. It's only set on the right side. However, there is the master plan that will include a bridge. Not to consider boring, Chancellor, but it will consider a bridge, and the City of Las Vegas is contemplating how they can help support that as well.
They may even be able to support the Boring Company, because they're going to have 70-some stations. We've already approved UNLVs as a board, so yeah.
Just for the record, Patty Charlton, I will say that, as you mentioned, you've heard about this since you've been on the board, but we've been under this concept with the City of Las Vegas. In fact, Oscar Goodman was the mayor at the time when we first started the conversations, and I think Regent Goodman will remember. I think she was in the room sometimes when we were talking about the MOU. But actually, going underground has been something that was talked about very preliminarily, and that would be something that I know that the campus can bring back, because you'd want to have that land identified as they're building out at this time. Because we all know, it's either safer to go underground or to go up above, what that looks like. Thank you. Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, we're going to be shovel-ready soon, next year. When is the building going to be open and students walk in, the first students, is what I'm interested in?
Thank you, Regent Boylan. We're all interested in that very question ourselves. No doubt, the commencement of the project beyond planning is dependent upon the legislative action this next session. So let's play devil's advocate for a moment. Let's say that the legislative session appropriates the appropriate amount for construction to finish. I think the earliest that we would begin to see that construction commence would be 2026, and then within, I'm going to be careful, Chancellor, because I know construction estimates are variable in terms of timelines, but we believe we could be done by 2028, conservatively.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Regent Rager.
So my question is something that would be futuristic. So on the Workforce Development Board, and then I sub-chair for the Governor, a childcare workforce, we want to get people back to work, and they can't because they have nowhere that doesn't cost $17,000 for one child. In the future, on this building, would there be the, and actually, this goes for all of our campuses, a daycare, so that people can come to work that not only live in that area but work on that campus? In the future plans, do you think that something could be looked into so that we can have a viable way for people to get to work and be able to stay without terrible concerns and economic pressures?
I appreciate that, Regent Rager. You're absolutely right. In fact, that very idea has been contemplated even in the design of the, or the redesign, I should say, of the master plan for that piece of parcel of land. Obviously, if we're going to be operating a law enforcement academy, we need to make sure that if and when there is childcare available, that it is in a safe and secure area that's nowhere near that. However, to your point, it has been asked in our community, and we have responded with an observant yes, we want to do that, especially as the rest of the master planning with the other six or seven buildings as they are erected over time, we want that to be part of our space as well. It's important, an additional note to mention, that the RTC Park and Ride, if you will, is right there. And so imagine a scenario where our students, who are also parents, can park and ride and drop off their children to and from, wherever they need to go, perhaps underground from a Boring's perspective, at the same time.
Thank you for that. It's just something that we're trying to do universally, and that would be so beneficial out in that area, and for those that need to get to work, but they don't have anything for their newborn to, you know, five-year-old. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Regent Goodman.
Thank you. This is in my district, so my only question is, I know that the BLM gave us that land, and then when does that sunset, where we have to have the building built? By what date is that?
You bet. I've actually got the land conveyance dates right in front of me, Regent Goodman. Thank you for that question. So to not complicate matters, and we can get deeper as the questions go, but essentially, the most recent issuance of a corrective land patent, that date of conveyance is September 28th, 2020. And essentially, then, what that means, from the Bureau of Land Management perspective, is that the deadline to commence construction is eight years from that commencement conveyance. And so that puts us at September 28th of 2028, and to be complete or show significant progress by September 28th, 2032. So that's sort of bucket one. Bucket two, however, is that that conveyance documentation, as filed, required the City of Las Vegas and CSN through NSHI to develop a land development agreement. And those dates aren't consistent right now, because there was initial date of conveyance in 2018, but there were some acreage discrepancies in that initial conveyance. And so that initial conveyance through the federal government was basically axed out, removed, reissued in 2020, which we believed in starts the clock again for that eight-year timeframe to commence construction. Our goal now is to go back to the City of Las Vegas, and Dr. Kibler has confirmed that he's going to do that here shortly, to ensure that our alignment between the BLM conveyance date and the eight years post-conveyance is in alignment with the land development agreement with the City of Las Vegas. We want there to be 100% transparency. What is that date by which we need to commence, and what is that date by which we need to show progress or complete?
Who's the councilperson for that district? Do you know who the councilperson is for the City of Las Vegas for that district?
Who's the councilperson?
It's okay, I can find out.
Off the top of my head, I don't recall.
No problem.
But we appreciate this being in your district, Regent. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. McCoy. Are there any other questions or comments from Regents? This is information-only. Thank you for bringing forward this update, and we look forward to the next phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six, student success programs and activities for DRI and TMCC. So first, we will start with DRI. President Acharya.
Thank you, Chair. Kamura Acharya, President of DRI. This presentation for DRI will be led by our Vice President for Research, Dr. Vikat Imogen, who is on the podium. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Vikat Imogen, Vice President for Research, for the record. Chair Carvalho, Vice Chair Downs, members of the board. It's my pleasure to speak to you today about student success at DRI. I'm going to start the presentation with a high-level overview, and then I'm going to ask my colleague in Reno, Dr. Vera Samburuova, to take over and describe in more detail the Atmospheric Sciences Program and the Hydrological Sciences Program that we worked with UNR to administer. Okay, so DRI is unique in the NSHI institutions. One reason is that we do not grant degrees. But despite this, there are a number of places throughout the state where we do interact with students, and probably the most visible and longest-lasting interaction we've had is through the graduate programs, first at UNR, starting over 50 years ago, and now more recently at UNLV. Just to give you a high-level overview, give or take, about 40 students a year are advised by DRI faculty, so these are the principal advisors for either a master's or PhD program, and that is done at UNR through two jointly-run programs, the Graduate Program in Hydrological Sciences and the Atmospheric Sciences Program. We also do the same with other departments, however, that's done more on an ad hoc basis, kind of on a faculty-to-faculty arrangement. At UNLV, as I mentioned, the arrangement is more recent, but we have also a longstanding relationship where oftentimes, DRI faculty will act as the advisors for UNLV graduate students, and that's done primarily on a faculty basis. There is a new water resources management program that UNLV has started this year, and we are very excited, because that is an opportunity for us through our partnership to increase that engagement. We also engage students at multiple other levels through direct employment at DRI. So this is a mix of graduate and undergraduate students. At any given time, we have between 35 to 55 students working on our campuses. They could be doing things like working in laboratories, assisting with field experiments, or they could be working within the research administration, and I believe that this is an excellent experience for them as well. I believe the board is familiar with our K-12 programs that are primarily, the outreach that we do is through the STEM Education Program, the green boxes, you might be familiar with those, and as well as our robotics program. So very briefly, before I hand it over to Dr. Samburuova to discuss the graduate experience, I think from my perspective, as the Vice President of Research and as somebody who was themselves a graduate student, the kind of experience that we provide at DRI to graduate students who are part of these programs is very interesting and unique. It is a truly immersive research experience. That is our focus. That's the primary thing that DRI does. So they really understand what research is like, end-to-end, all the way from administration to how it's executed, to ultimately what the products are of that research and publications. It's really convenient here in the South, because our campus is immediately adjacent to UNLV, so students can walk over, although we do offer free parking. And at UNR, it's a little bit further away, it's about a 10-minute drive, but again, we offer free parking to try to facilitate that. I want to take a minute to talk about this interesting program that was started, actually, during the pandemic in 2021, and this is our Research Immersion Internship. This is really directed at undergraduate students and primarily at students who are in the community colleges and Nevada State University. And the idea here is to, the problem that we were trying to solve is that many of these students don't necessarily have early exposure to an experience in a research environment, specifically a STEM research environment. So what could we do to get them engaged potentially in STEM and get them to consider even STEM as a career, where they might not have done that before? And the solution to this was to essentially create an end-to-end program that lasts over a period of several weeks, that has a beginning and has an end, as I mentioned, and that actually pays these students to participate in the internship. And that's really important, because in many instances, these students have multiple responsibilities, they have families in some cases, and they have jobs. So if we're going to take their time away, then we need to be able to reimburse them. The emphasis is on a closed-ended project, so the idea is to train them using our own research faculty. In each case, our faculty partner up with three to five students. They spend the first week kind of giving an introduction to the problem to be solved and providing the training, and then they go through and collect the data, whether it's field data or whether it's data that's available through data sets, and conduct the research together, and then come up with a final product. As I mentioned, the program was started in 2021. As I mentioned, the program was started in 2021 with about 15 students, and it has now grown to 20 students, and we look forward to growing it going forward. Again, at the end of every iteration, we do we ask these students to evaluate the program and give us their feedback. This is done both quantitatively and qualitatively. I'm going to take a second here and just read the last quote that we have here from one of the student evaluations. "I didn't know I was able to create something so professional looking with my colleagues and to be able to attach my name to my first real piece of semi professional work online and publish it. It makes me quite proud. I was also directed to another internship by my mentor with the Springs Preserve, which I had applied for and gotten accepted. It has kickstarted my professional career." We love to hear that, obviously. So we do this, of course, because we are part of an academic institution and we are part of NSHI. But actually, we are also acutely aware that the students within NSHI end up at DRI as employees. And it turns out they make some of the best employees that we have, whether it's the faculty or at the staff level. So it is our investment. With that, I would like to pass this over to Dr. Samburova, who's going to be in the Reno System Office.
Okay, it works. Hello. Good afternoon. My for the record, my name is Vera Samburova, S A M B U R O V A. Never spelled my name. So a little bit of a history. I actually a former graduate program director for Atmospheric Sciences. I served for six years as a graduate program director. My turn is over. And now we have a new director. The program altogether was actually established in 1967. It was done with at the physics department at UNR with DRI faculty involved. The DRI faculty were responsible for the curriculum and the instructions, teaching classes. In 1991, this program was a little bit modified and UNR established masters and PhD degrees in Atmospheric Sciences. Next. So this is actually a very collaborative program between UNR and DRI. So the program director typically reports to the dean of the graduate school, currently Marcus Kennelmayr. And this is the only Atmospheric Sciences graduate program in Nevada, which is really important. Here, a little bit of the data on our students. On the left bottom graph, you can see total masters and PhDs. You can see a pretty steady statistics there. We're very happy to have a lot of PhD students in our program. On the right side, we're very proud of this plot because we have PhD data on PhD male and female students. And finally, we broke the record. We have more female PhD students than male PhD students in Atmospheric Sciences. The mission of the Atmospheric Sciences Program is to train graduate students so they will be able to do modeling work, meteorology work, climatology work, atmospheric chemistry, atmospheric physics, and so on and so forth. And Desert Research Institute faculty play a very important role in this program. We have total 36 Atmospheric Sciences faculty altogether in this program, and 26 of them are located at the Desert Research Institute. Next. Here you can see not the entire list of the research topics that our program covers, but the top, atmospheric chemistry, atmospheric physics, cloud and aerosol physics, climate trends, remote sensing, weather forecasting. Now, our program is also heavily involved in the fire research. So we have faculty who are working on the fire, on modeling fire, characterization of the emissions from the fire, and we're all affected by the fires, as you all probably feel. And our program is heavily involved in this kind of research. Next. So the faculty have different groups, different labs, organized, different centers. We have Western Region Climate Center. Actually, a lot of graduate students work there and in hourly also basis. We have Nevada State Cloud Seeding Programs, you all know, renewable energy lab, organic analytical lab, and so on and so forth. So we have a really great infrastructure at the DRI that supports the Atmospheric Sciences graduate program research. So here, this is my favorite plot, where you took just some pictures of our students who are performing their research at DRI and at UNR. You can see some students working in the lab. Some students are already making fires and analyzing emissions from the fires. We have students who work on the analysis of post fire soil properties, students who do it modeling, like Hazal Muzadek. And our students, as you can see, the diversity is pretty good. We have students from around the world, and it's great to have to have them in our program. Next. Overall, our students working really hard. Just for the record, those not all our students, just one shot I was able to take. In the past 10 years, our students received over 50 different awards. We have a very long list of publications. Actually, our program is super successful in publishing research. We have many NASA graduate student fellowships granted to our students, a few NSF student fellowships, and our students usually are granted with UNR fellowships, scholarships, Nevada Drive fellowships. They're always in the list of the recipients. Next. A few words about the Graduate Program of Hydrologic Sciences, or GPHS Program. This program is funded in 1962 and concurrent with the Hydrologic Sciences Center at DRI as well. And at the same year, the Dr. George Maxey also arrived to Reno, and he was professor at UNR and faculty at DRI. He is pretty much godfather of groundwater research. So and what's amazing that we are still using methods and formulas and calculations that were established by Dr. Maxey. Next. So this program is very unique program for North America altogether. It covers also a lot of topics. Some of them are here, water chemistry, groundwater hydrology, policy, fire hydrology, and so on and so forth. So water is also very important topic for Nevada, as you all know. Next. Here's some statistics on the students. So we have hydrogeology and hydrology students. We split them here. You can see that also the the plot that we have more PhD students later years than master students, which is great. And typically, we have between 30 or 45 students in the hydro program. Next. So again, to to highlight our students' achievements, they actually working really hard to get awards. They're applying for different fellowships, student fellowships. Currently, we have four NSF granted graduate student fellowships for hydro students, national merit scholars, dean fellowships, scholarships. They're all always applying and presenting for the for the conference and presenting their research in national and international conferences. They're listed here. Next. And here, a few words about faculty. There are about 50 faculty which are involved in this program. And DRI, again, is the largest portion of the teaching and advising faculty than UNR and UNLV. Next. Oh, that's it. Yes. Thank you for your attention. And if you have any questions, we can either. Happy to answer them.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Yes, Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have too many questions, but I do have a comment. I'm impressed by what these guys do, guys, gals, everybody at DRI, all the good work they're doing with our students, especially Dr. Vik here said that most of the students in the PhD programs don't come from NSHI, right?
Are the students in the PhD program, they're all NSHI students?
NSHI students. That's that's great. I like that. But what I wanted to say is, Dr. Acharya and Dr. Vik, they put on a great show the last two days at the encore, and it was the fire sciences. What were you showing us all about the fires and how you addressed them and control them or work with them? Not so much control. I learned something new. It was you work with them, right?
Thank you. I mean, it was to how do you build a resilient communities around wildfires?
That's awesome. And the main guy there was the guy from not the main guy, the one that really interested, the guy from Paradise, how you, you know, come back after a fire, right?
Correct. His name was Bruce Yerman. Yeah.
That's it.
He lost his home and he's now leading the recovery.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's what's important. How do we recover? So I learned so much from from the presentation, the two days you had. I was there one day because the first day you were serving free wine, so I stayed. But the second day, I don't know. So anyway, it was so much knowledge. You guys are impressive. And I don't like to praise people up to their faces usually, but I think all of you guys do a great, great job. They're they're really good for NSHI. I think you're the best hidden secret we have. Thank you, gentlemen. And ma'am, up there in where are you from? What are you Russian?
I'm Russian.
You're Russian. Very good. All right. Thank you so much. You guys are awesome. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. No more questions?
Thank you, Regent Boylan. Are there any other questions? Thank you so much for your presentation today. It's it's wonderful that that you can use your your expertise and knowledge to assist the next generation of scientists. So thank you for for doing that and for being a part of our system. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Next, we'll move on to TMCC. So I'll turn it over to President Hilgerson.
Good afternoon, everyone. Karen Hilgerson, for the record, and I think there is a PowerPoint presentation that should be up on. Thank you very much. So first of all, after a lot of thought, I decided to do sort of a thematic student success approach today, and that is the title, Student Success and Sustainability. And I next slide, please. Okay, the first thing that I think is really important here is to just remind everyone of the TMCC mission statement, create a future you will love with accessible, innovative educational opportunities at TMCC. Together, we can make it happen. And part of our strategic plan also contains a list of values. And one of the TMCC values, as was sort of collaborated college wide a few years ago, was a healthy environment and a healthy college community. And I would like to say how grateful I am to faculty and staff because they have really leaned in to sustainability as it pertains to a healthy environment and a healthy college community. And when I say faculty and staff, I'm talking about academic teaching faculty. I'm talking about administrative faculty, particularly in student services. And I'm talking about classified staff and administrative leadership because it really does take a village to make a strategic plan, which is the map, to turn that into the reality, right? And so we really work work together. So next slide, please. So how do we define student success? Well, for the last decade of my career, really the last 15 years, student success has been often defined in quantitative terms. However, I think it's so much more than that. And I'm drawing from my 22 years as a as a faculty member when I say that. Yes, we do need to look at outcomes. Of course, we do need to look at completion rates. But what lurks behind these certificates and degrees? Experience, peer interaction, projects that inspire, faculty leading students to a life with purpose, and staff doing the same. At TMCC, student success includes how well we align the student experience with the values expressed in our strategic plan. So quiz question, what was the value on the previous slide that I shared with you? Hopefully, you remember that the value on the previous slide is a healthy environment and a healthy college community. Okay, next slide, please. TMCC embraces climate action in a variety of ways and across the college campus locations. Although there is so much that we have done on the facilities elements, and I'm so grateful to Dr. Io Akanola and his team, but we have been recognized nationally for these actions. But today, I'm going to focus more on the programmatic side, the curriculum side that link directly to student success. Next slide, please. And I'm going to look at professional technical programs and human health programs for starters. I think we lost the picture. There we go. Next slide. What TMCC is really nationally known for, we're nationally known for a few things, but the one that I'm focusing on today is advanced manufacturing and automotive in a renewable energy economy. By now, I presume that as Regents, you are all aware of the training programs and partnerships that TMCC has with both Tesla and Panasonic. We're literally serving hundreds, thousands of students since I've been at TMCC with these companies. These companies are leading the transition to a renewable energy economy via electric vehicles and battery production. At TMCC, faculty and staff have leaned into this new world economy through our advanced manufacturing and state of the art automotive technician programs. These programs include curricula and instruction centered on electric vehicle production and maintenance. And the point there is, part part of leaning into sustainability is truly through what we can do and workforce training and development because the whole world economy is moving in this direction. And if the United States is going to keep its economic edge in the world, if we are going to try to continue to have a society where we're we all have the opportunity to prosper, then this leaning in to a new sustainable economy, economy focused on renewable energies and other innovative technologies is really, really crucial. And community colleges in particular play a vital role in this. And TMCC, I'm happy to report, is in the thick of it. Next slide, please. The other workforce program, and it's fun that I'm after DRI and the mention of resiliency in firefighting, and this is big in the world of sustainability, the fact that in this particular region, one of the outcomes, unfortunate outcomes of climate change are fires, fires, that it's really important for us to develop a resilience because these fires are here, they will probably worsen as a result of climate change, and we need to be ready for them. And one of the ways that that we are preparing at TMCC is through our firefighter training program. And firefighting training programs are very important to this decade. Our firefighting pathways begin with one semester skill certificates, up to 24 students per semester. In the spring of 2024, 38 students completed their one year certificate, and we had 82 students working on completing a two year associate and applied science degree in fire suppression and technology. And finally, we offer non credit training in wildland fire, and we attract trainees from three states, maybe more at this point. And we had 635 enrollees in spring of 2024 alone. This is because wildfires are becoming a real problem, right? And so part of leaning into our value of a healthy environment and a healthier world is through our workforce training programs such as firefighting. Next slide, please. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about healthy creatures, that part of living in a healthy world and a healthy planet are the healthy creatures. Our health programs, including nursing, veterinary nursing, dental care, and our public health degrees emphasize caring for the health of humans and the animals that we love. The health of our our college community is also dependent on doing what we can to create a Mother Earth that supports our health. At TMCC, this includes an emphasis on health through fitness, health through good food options at our TMCC run cafe, using hydration stations so that less plastic is is not left rotting on our ocean floors, and encouraging conservation, and so much more. This is all part of a campus ethos that has leaned in to sustainability and a healthier world. Next slide, please. I'm really excited, though, to get near the end of this presentation by focusing on transfer preparation. There's so many great things happening here. The mix of professional technical students to transfer is about 50 50 at TMCC. Many of our students are pursuing transfer degrees in STEM fields, and of these, many degrees in STEM fields, and of these, many students have been inspired by numerous efforts in the TMCC Science Department. Thank you, Ginger Dough. There have been four big efforts, including our B Campus 2022 designation, the Biannual Eco Blitz, and the undergraduate research option that has led to student publications summarizing research discoveries. Most recently, the Biology Department is putting together a Natural History Museum where students can study up close the anatomy of critters in our region. The primary lesson for students engaging with our Biology Program is that humans are a part of a system, a biodiverse system that includes things like plants, animals, and even bugs. These systems are influenced by climate change, and the effects need to be studied and understood. And so I'd like to share a few student examples of how these projects inspire student success. Well, of course, we are a B Campus USA. We're really excited about that, and lots of celebrations around that. And if you recall, the last time we hosted the Board of Regents, you, the Regents received a, a small jar of honey produced at our campus by our fantastic bees, right? Next slide, please. Perhaps what's more exciting is the, is the Biannual Eco Blitz. It happens twice a year. And this is such a great program because at the students, with help from faculty members, some wonderful biologists, they descend on Rancho San Rafael Regional Park to provide opportunities for students to assess biodiversity in a green park environment. Hannah McEmmy and Katie Schneider have led etymological data collection and analysis across seasons and habitats. Over 125 students from eight Biology courses have participated in data collection this past Eco Blitz, including focused vegetation surveys and biodiversity documentation. And the, this can also lead to publications for students, which is super exciting when that happens for a two-year college student. Next slide, please. And that leads me to undergraduate research. All of this is really hands-on, project-based, exciting and engaging learning, all with a purpose, a purpose to have a healthier world. Data analysis is ongoing, and given the magnitude of data collected thus far, we, we've got, you know, we're coming up with some really interesting findings. Preliminary analysis from vegetation surveys indicate two distinct blooming seasons, spring and fall within each habitat, forest grassland, sagebrush, wetland, riparian, the diversity and abundance of, oh, and the diversity and abundance of flowering plants strongly correlates with climate patterns. Again, sustainability and climate change. So climate change exacerbates the effects on these habitats. Eriko Sakamura is working with two data science students. So now we're going from the biological sciences and inter, using interdisciplinary partnerships with data science to facilitate data analysis. This also stemming from the Eco Blitz is a long-term project to monitor wallet, water quality along Evans Creek. Here, students Philip Nagon and Andy Gassa assess human impacts along the creek which transverses the park. So these are examples of students who not, they just don't, you know, talk about climate change. They're taking climate action by studying the health of our regional park so that they can make recommendations and build resiliency and strength and mitigate any negative effects, hopefully, of climate change. All right. Now I want to introduce probably the most exciting recent development. Next slide, please. And we have a group of faculty working very hard on the, the first TMCC Natural History Museum. And the Natural History Museum team investigated the biodiversity of Great Basin species represented in student collections from last semester's Biology Lab courses. Kylie Smith, Megan Ramirez, and Jackson Rockwell identified, photographed, cross-referenced, and digitized collection data for over 850 insect, plant, and fungi specimens. This was just the student portion, right? The faculty are also adding to the collection, and I believe we have approximately 5,000 items already in the first Natural History Museum at TMCC. The TMCC Natural History Museum, or NHM, is a research-grade teaching museum that is integral to the Biology and Wildlife Technician Programs, and I'm so grateful to the faculty who have worked hard to make this a reality, very hard. The NHM provides students hands-on learning opportunities where students learn the critical role museums provide for the environment and human health. Students are also integral to the NHM through learning collection and curation techniques, applications within and beyond biology disciplines, and the importance of this knowledge as it pertains to sustainability. Student collections provide an invaluable resource for students and the Natural History Museum alike. Student engagement and success increases because student excitement increases toward these real-world, applied research opportunities. The museum benefits from a rapid growth in the museum collections, primarily plants and insects, many of which are species new to the collections. These collections become integral for undergraduate curriculum across disciplines, venues for undergraduate research, and accessible to the global scientific community. And I want to say that the grand opening is soon. Yes, and we, we will try to keep you up on that. I, I should have included in, in this, so I will remember to, to make sure to invite the Regents and anyone else who's interested. Next slide, please. I will almost close with a shout out for our incredible Earth Day. And I believe this is the, the short video. At least I thought there was a short video. Here we go. Thank you. partners who had table and poster sessions at Dandini, April 2024. These spotlighted a number of really great efforts to help our planet regain balance and good health. Students can learn about the many ways that they can advocate for climate action and conservation. You notice the sewing machine there with some fabric. The idea is to try to keep your clothes as long as you possibly can, which might mean going back to the days of mending, right? And also, there's a lot of new sustainable research related to fabrics. You know, I, I was able to, to, to meet a woman who works for a company that's turning seaweed into fabric, as an example. So we really try to widen the imaginations through our Earth Day. We also highlighted progress in the Hilltop Garden, which is home to many bees and bee-friendly plants. On Earth Day, we enjoyed a very special land acknowledgement in the garden and watched TMCC's children, the children in our fantastic childcare center, who, and they were in awe at the ladybugs that they helped to release in the garden. To see our adult students marvel along with TMCC employees at the ladybug release was really cool. That was my favorite part of Earth Day this past year. And these are the stories related to student success that span generations, right? It's for the children, it's for our future children, that are hard to capture in the quantitative numbers. Last slide. It is nice that TMCC has been recognized for our work toward a sustainable campus. We've been recognized nationally by the EPA with the Green Power Leadership Award. Our Café Verde was recognized as by the Nevada Green Dining Award, and of course, we were the 2023 Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful Sustainability Champion of the Year, in addition to our recognition in the past through the National Second Nature Organization. In the end, modeling best practice, practices around consumption and conservation, providing opportunities to engage in undergraduate research that is focused on understanding our natural environment, bringing voice to our planet through the words and actions of students, faculty, and staff at TMCC, and offering relevant programs that provide infrastructure to a renewable energy economy. These are the things that are positively transforming the lives of many TMCC students by creating a strong sense of common purpose around a healthy planet and a healthy world. So thank you so much. These are the things that transform students' lives. And I, I, I'm open to questions at this point.
Thank you, President Hilgerson. I have a question from Vice Chair Downs.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho, and I thank you, President Hilgerson. I applaud you and your team who put this together. I want to give credit to other people, too. I, I'm sure you had a big hand in this. So, um, this is, this is really interesting and helpful. I mean, reminded of my own research and studying, Alexander Astin cited student involvement in research with faculty as a, a component of student success. So it's, it's great that students are able to take that practical approach and, um, see where their education applies. So I am curious in the future presentations if there's any other types of programs you, you do, such as, nothing as exciting as this, but something like Nevada Fit or Rebel Week or something. Not to diminish this, this is great.
Right.
And I appreciate everything you're sharing with us, and, uh, it's nice to see what is happening in the community here in northern Nevada. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And, and to, and may, I'd like to respond a little bit because I, I'm, I'm heading into my ninth year, and it's so interesting how, when I thought about all the presentations I've already done in the past on the institutional metrics and on the, the spotlights that we do, I, I was worried that I would end up being redundant because I think I've targeted quite a few of them. But I'm very excited at some point to do, to unpack our faculty advising model. And I think that would be one that, once we have a little more data on that, that, that you would be very interested in. But I do appreciate your, your comments very much. Thank you.
I'd be interested in seeing how, how that's working out with the faculty and that connection to the students as well. So that's, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments from Regents? Seeing none, I just want to thank you for your presentation, President Hilgerson, and thank you for being here today.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, for the next item, item number seven, discussion of the removal of Regent Donald Silvanti McMichael, Sr., from the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Committee. Um, since this item requests a discussion of the circumstances and procedures leading to the removal of Regent McMichael as the Vice Chair of the Idea Committee, since I have the most factual information about these circumstances, since it was my decision, I, I'll begin with this item. Uh, first, my decision was based on the fact that Regent McMichael's remarks were made as a Regent deliberating on a policy revision. He was not acting as a member of the public or private citizen. He was acting in his public capacity as an elected member of the Board of Regents. At the time, there was, um, there was a lot going on in that meeting, and I realized that his, his comments were, in my view, problematic. Um, but I, I allowed him to have his time during the meeting, um, and I, I left it at that. Um, so I kind of have a chronology about how, how this came to be. Um, on June 10th, uh, Regent McMichael called me to ask what I thought about his comments. Um, I was heading out of town, so I didn't, I, I didn't have a lot of time to speak with him, but I did let him know that his, his words were, were very strong. Um, but I left it at that since I was on my way out of town, and it really was difficult for me to speak to him. On June 17th, uh, I issued a statement concerning his remarks made at the June quarterly meeting. Um, in, in that statement, uh, we made reference to the fact that, um, there were comments downplaying the concerns of, uh, Jewish, Jewish students' safety on ENSI campuses. And for that statement, I asked for the system and board staff to assist me in composing that statement. Before I made the final decision, um, I had a call on June 18th with, uh, with Regent McMichael, along with Vice Chair Downs. Um, during that conversation, which was a, a fairly lengthy conversation, I asked him to, Regent McMichael, to either explain, clarify, or apologize for his comments. I, we let him know, both Vice Chair Downs and I let him know, that his comments were very concerning to us, and we had started hearing from others in the community. Um, he told us that he believed his comments were inclusive and his words were not harmful. I also let him know that many had reached out, um, including elected officials, and I let him know that his refusal to make any further statements about his remarks would be informing our next steps. So throughout that week, I received calls, emails, and other communications from many people, including prominent community members and respected leaders from within ENSI, some of whom wanted to share with me the harm that Regent McMichael's comments had on them personally. I also know that I wasn't the only Regent who received such communications, and I believe each Regent received over 1,000 emails demanding Regent McMichael's removal from his, uh, leadership position on that committee. And the Chancellor also received over 200 different emails demanding the same. In my view, as officers of the state and elected by the voters of Nevada, it's incumbent upon me to listen when constituents speak to me. I listened, and I came to this conclusion that I felt that the right thing to do was to remove Vice Chair Downs from this leadership position after much deliberation. So in considering that Regent McMichael's remarks as a Regent in that meeting did not support and uphold the values of inclusion and equity and damaged this board's trust with our Jewish students, employees, and the greater community, I made the decision in consultation with legal counsel and the support of Vice Chair Downs. And so we issued that statement, or, I'm sorry, not a statement, it was a letter that first went out to Regent McMichael, and then after to all of the other Regents, saying that his, his, um, because of his comments at the June meeting, we were, um, removing him from the committee. I, I, I can stop there, um, because that was, that according to the, um, agenda item, it asks for circumstances and procedures leading up to the removal of Regent McMichael. I can, there have been numerous conversations with him even since that time, um, which also led to my, uh, more recent letter clarifying my position and, um, decision to remove him, uh, that first was asked of me by, by Regent Boylan after a meeting that was here, um, at the System Office, and then again by Regent McMichael. Um, but I, I'll stop there for right now. I don't, I, and I will turn it over to those Regents who made this request, um, to say whatever they would like to say about this.
Point of order, Chair Carvalho?
Yes.
Point of order.
Vice Chair Downs.
There were just that, you, you had a, a mix-up of names there. You talked about removing, you said Vice Chair Downs.
I'm very sorry.
Is Vice Chair, uh, okay?
Yes.
To clarify the record. Sorry about that.
I, I apologize. Thank you. At this time, I'll, I'll turn it over to those Regents who made the request.
Madam Chair?
Regent Boylan.
I know, it takes a few seconds. You just mentioned something, the question was asked by Regent Boylan. What was the question again, if you don't mind? What was, you just said that. What was that?
Um, not a question, that after our meeting on July 31st, you, um, you and I stayed back, and one of the things that you mentioned to me with, was, uh, a possible clarification to go out to the board members, um, stating that Regent McMichael wasn't taken off of the committee, but he was taken off as Vice Chair. You, you expressed to me that you thought that that would be a good clarification.
Oh, right, right. Yes, ma'am. I do remember that now. I was, there's been so much going on. And with your permission, I'll just say this. Uh, I've talked to Regent McMichael, and he knows that I did not support his statements, but I support his, uh, First Amendment rights to say what he, uh, can say. And that was the main thing, and I- And that was the main thing, and I figured this whole thing comes down to freedom of speech. Whether we like, I know I'm not talking about being in a movie theater and you start shouting "fire, fire." There's no freedom of speech there. But his freedom of speech to express his thoughts how he thought best, that is what I am totally against his removal because he had the First Amendment, freedom of speech. And that's where I stepped in because I myself, I'm concerned about the process of how you removed him from that position because, like we talked about at that same meeting, and Counsel Jimmy was there. It doesn't state anywhere in our bylaws or NRS or anything that says that you can remove someone from an officer position in a standing or in any committee. You have the right to appoint those people. Unfortunately, it doesn't say that. And maybe that's something we need to change in our bylaws.
Madam Chair and Regent Boylan, I hate to interrupt, but just what you're speaking to, Regent Boylan, the process of appointment and removal is number eight, the next agenda item?
Yeah.
I believe this agenda item is discussion of the circumstances of the removal of Regent McMichael from the IDEA Committee. So, what you're speaking to is, this agenda is, but it's the next agenda item?
It's on the next one, yes, I know, and I thank you for that. But this is what I'm trying to build up to, is this is why it came to this. And I let Regent McMichael speak because it's just a basic thing of freedom of speech. And then the process is what we discussed, no, you were not there. Jimmy was. Then we talked about the process through, you know, the bylaws, et cetera, not being there, but being in the Roberts Rules of Order. But I'm glad you stopped me right there. That's the next one. So, with your permission, I'll stop right there and let McMichael go for it.
In the discussions leading up to the letter on June 20th, removing me from my position as Vice Chair of the IDEA Committee, I had informed Chair Carvalho that the best way to correct this situation, because from my knowledge and studying the different aspects of this removal, the process that was used was faulty to begin with. But I also wanted to get this agenda item in so that I could at least tell my side of the story. Unfortunately, the agenda item that I submitted was so changed that it doesn't reflect what I had asked for. It is basically what the Chair wanted. But I'll accept it because, you know, what they say, it's better that the camel gets his nose under the tent than not at all. So, in referencing certain aspects of my free speech, I understand that government entities do not punish individuals for their free speech, regardless of their status, whether they're a celebrity or the president or just an individual on the street. Government has no responsibility to chill free speech. I learned that being in the military for 20 years. So, for the Chair to then say, in some of our conversations, none of which indicated that such an action was going to take place, I asked after this action had been taken whether or not I'd be privy to the minutes of the meeting, the individuals who were involved in making this decision, and whether or not this is something that should have been brought before the entire board. Now, in doing so, I've found through Roberts Rules of Order that indeed the Chair did not have the authority to make this decision on her own. She, I believe, was relying on information, and I have no idea who provided it, that members of a standing committee, Chair or Vice Chair, are not a part of that standing committee. And that statement alone means that she would have the authority, if she could prove that, to make that decision on her own. But unfortunately for the Chair, the Chair and Vice Chair of a standing committee is a member of that standing committee, and as such, each member is termed one year. So, the Chair, I assume with counsel, tried to use Roberts Rules of Order to indicate that we have nothing in our bylaws that indicate that the Chair and Vice Chair have a term. And that's disproven in the bylaws under Section 2 Appointments. Under Section 2, just a moment. Under Section 2 of our bylaws, it states the members of a committee and the powers of their members are set forth in this section. Excuse me. The members of a standing committee, its Chair and Vice Chair shall be appointed by the Chair of the Board from amongst the members of the Board. Now, in this appointment section, it states no less than six times referring to members. And it only refers to the Chair once, and the Chair and Vice Chair of the Standing Committee also one time. Nowhere in our appointments does it indicate the officer. And in specific, it states that the Chair of the Board may be eligible as a member of the Standing Committee, but may not serve as its Chair. So, those statements alone indicate that we, in fact, the Chair and the Vice Chair on a standing committee are members of that standing committee. Therefore, she has no authority on her own to remove. She must follow Roberts Rules of Order 6216 in order to remove an officer. So, I was trying to make that point several times, but I kept getting feedback from our Chief of Staff that we are not considered members of the Standing Committee. Where she came about that information, I have no idea. If it was one of our counsel, I would like to hear from them. And please read the statement that says that the members of the Standing Committee, Chair and Vice Chair, are not members of that committee. No objections?
Yes, I think they're waiting for me to let them know that we're ready for them.
Yeah, Madam Chair, with your indulgence, I just, this is, during the timeframe that you described, I was not available for counsel. I was just, for the record, I was on a family trip. But after the fact, I did weigh in on your authority as Chair to appoint and remove. And the opinion that I came up with, which in doing research, I made sure it wasn't just my opinion, but it was opinion of other counsel and consistent with advice given to prior Chairs on the same issue, which I did confirm. But Regent McMichael is correct in that your bylaws do not specifically address the removal issue when it comes to committee membership or officers on that committee. And because your, but your bylaws have also adopted the Roberts Rules of Order, as you are well aware. So, in Section 13.23 of Roberts Rules, it says, quote, "Unless the bylaws or other governing rules provide otherwise, the appointing authority has the power to remove or replace." Period. And so, that was, again, that was my opinion after the action that you took. I stand by that opinion, and it's also my understanding that just to make sure that, as we all know, you can get four attorneys in a room and get four different opinions, but kind of err on the side of caution, I believe General Counsel Martinez and others came up with the idea and offered Regent McMichael the ability to reach out to what I'll just describe as a, you know, a third-party parliamentarian for yet another opinion. And I believe that is in the works. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, a question I have is, is the Chair and Vice Chair on a standing committee members of that standing committee?
I'm having the same trouble as Regent Boylan was having with the microphone earlier. I can, to answer your question, I'll defer to Jimmy as well, but I believe that if you're an officer on the committee, you're also a member of the committee as well.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I agree. The Vice Chair and the Chair of a standing committee are appointed in those administrative capacities by the Chair. So, your role as a committee member is separate from your role as an officer of the committee. And that's why Roberts Rules sets out different standards. So, there is a term to your membership in the bylaws. It's a one-year membership as a member of a committee. The bylaws do not set forth the same membership term for the Vice Chair and Chair.
And where does it state that?
It's silent on that. So, when it's silent on that, you go to Roberts Rules, and it specifically tells you what rule to follow if it's silent on that. And that's what you had requested that we reach out to a parliamentarian for, and that's the process we're currently waiting on now.
Yes, but in our bylaws, it states that we are members of the Standing Committee. There's no separation that says because you're an officer, you're not a member on that Standing Committee. I just want to reference that I've asked several institutions around the country just that question about whether a officer, Chair, or Vice Chair are considered members of their Standing Committee. And not one has said anything to the contrary. They all indicated that the Officer, Chair, or Vice Chair are members of their Standing Committee. And you keep saying it's silent. If it's in our bylaws that state that they are Standing Committee members, then where's the silence?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I agree with you. The Vice Chair and Chair are members of the committee. What I'm saying, the difference is in the term of office as a member versus the term of office for an officer. That's where the distinction comes in, and you need to read Roberts Rules with that distinction in mind.
Well, under Roberts Rules, it states that if we have terms, and every member of the Standing Committee has a term to serve of one year, there's no separation indicating there's a different term for an Officer, Chair, or Vice Chair. And that's in our bylaws. It states, you know, it states, "The members of the Standing Committee shall serve terms of one year or until the first organizational meeting of the Board following the committee's members' appointments." Where does it stipulate that the Chair, Officer, or Vice Chair have a different term as a member?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I completely agree. You serve as a member for a term of one year. Your appointment as Officer of a committee is at the discretion of the Board Chair.
So, in Roberts Rules of Order, it indicates if there's a term, that member to be removed from his position must be brought before the Board, and it falls under Roberts Rules of Order 6216. There's no getting around it. If it's in our bylaws that we are members, we serve a term of one year, then Roberts Rules of Order indicate that the only course to take in order to remove an officer is under 6216.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, that's where we disagree. And a point of legal advice to the Board, our advice has been that you cannot remove a member from a standing committee without going through that process. The Chair has discretion when it comes to removing an officer. So, that individual is still a member of the Board, but the individual can be removed from their administrative duties as an officer.
It is not stated in Roberts Rules of Order or our bylaws. Our bylaws do not say Officer. It does not. You want to indicate that it does, but it does not. It only refers to us as Chair and Vice Chair. If it does in Roberts Rules of Order, where does it state that? Please read it.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, that has been our consistent legal advice over the years. The same opinion has been sent in the past to the same parliamentarian that we've reached out to, and the parliamentarian has concurred with that interpretation. At this point, if, I don't know what else to say. This is a point at which I think Regent McMichael does not agree with the legal advice in our office. However, I do think that at this point, it's the correct legal advice, and at this time, our office stands on that legal advice.
Well, at this point, I have to, once again, make the point that there's no distinction between any of the members on a standing committee. It does not indicate in our bylaws what the role of an officer is. And under Roberts Rules of Order, if you wanted to make such a statement that we were somehow separate, it would indicate that in Section D of Committee Procedures, only committee members have the right to be present during its actual deliberations. All of our members are always present during deliberations, and we have full authority to vote. Therefore, there is no separation to indicate that somehow an officer has a separate duty under the Standing Committee. And so, once again, unless it is written in that way, separating an officer's duties from the Standing Committee's position, there is no way that legal can make a statement that way. As far as what was said by a parliamentarian in the past, I've asked for that information, and it's never been forthcoming. I would like to see what that information or advice was given in whatever particular situation, since this situation has never in the history of ENSI come up. There has been no Officer, Chair, or Vice Chair removed from their committee positions. If you can produce that information from the parliamentarian, I would like to go over it. I've asked numerous times for that information, and it has never been forthcoming. I have also asked for the minutes of the meeting and what was the decision made at the meeting, as well as any supporting documentation for such a meeting. And under NRS 241, any such action taken by this deliberative body has to be before the public. When was the public notified? When was the public notified?
Regent McMichael, there are a few questions that you've asked that I can answer specifically. One, you're asking for the information from the parliamentarian, but I believe that our legal counsel has asked you for your approval for a letter to be sent to the parliamentarian. And I believe that you have let our Chief of Staff know that you're working on your own information on that at this point. So there has been numerous requests of you for your approval for that letter to go out, and I don't believe that our legal counsel has received that from you. There was no meeting regarding your removal. It was my decision. I sent an email to our Chief of Staff and the Vice Chair of the Board with my draft of the letter that you eventually got on the 20th. That's it. There's no meeting. That wasn't, there were no other deliberations. It was my decision at the time, after I spoke with our Chief of Staff and Mr. Wixom as legal counsel at the time, and that's what I did. Also, in addition to that, you say that item number seven was what I wanted to put forward. I approved it as, after I believe you and the others, you and others, I'm not sure who, had conversations about what can and cannot be on this agenda. But this is not my agenda item, and I did not frame this agenda item. I approved it only because that is the procedure that we must go through for the agenda, but I did not, I did nothing to change this agenda item for you.
Okay, well, I wish to read into the record Agenda Item Request. Title: To Discuss and Vote on the Recision of the Dismissal Letter Issued to Regent Donald Silvante McMichael Sr. from the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Committee.
I'm having the same problem. There you go. Again, Regent Boylan, I can sympathize with the microphone issue. I apologize to interrupt, but we can't, this is an informational item, number seven, and discussion right now, it has to be limited to, quote, "The discussion of the removal of Regent Donald McMichael Sr. from the Idea Committee." It doesn't, any request for future business would have to go on the new business agenda item, which is
I'm sorry, but this
Which is, which would be number nine.
This is not a request for future business. This is the original information that I provided to the, to our Chief of Staff, our
Well, regardless of what your request was, Regent McMichael, from an open meeting law standpoint, which we're all very mindful of here, we have to, unfortunately, we have to limit to the scope of what's been, what has been agendized. Right now, we're on number seven. We also have number eight, which will talk, when you get to that, it'll be about the process and appointment, procedural-type stuff. So I just, again, I caution you from an open meeting law standpoint to
I thank you for your caution.
Stick with Agenda Items, number
I thank you for your caution, but I will continue.
To, NRS 241040, as you're all aware, NRS, Chapter 241 is the so-called Open Meeting Law Chapter in our Nevada revised statutes. And under the first paragraph of that section, it states, "Each member of a public body who attends a meeting where any violation of this chapter occurs, has knowledge, and participates in that, is guilty of a misdemeanor." Second of all, there's also a kind of a safe harbor in that. In Paragraph Six, and paraphrasing this, "Is no criminal penalty or administrative fine may be imposed upon a member of the public body pursuant to this section if a member of the public body violates any provision as a result of legal advice." So there's like a legal advice safe harbor there as well. So I just, I need to put that on the record, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Well, since there's no penalty, I will continue. I will also indicate in NRS 241.010, in enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that all public bodies exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their action be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. So apparently, the Chair has been in violation because her own deliberation to herself means that she did not want this to be open to the public. And as such, it's in violation of NRS 241.
Regent McMichael, as Chair of the Board, there are certain duties and authority that are granted to that Chair. To, that does not always mean that it's done deliberatively with all members of the Board. I did not break open meeting law.
I'm only stating with the 241 references. If this was not done openly, it was done behind closed doors, and I might add secretly, that no member of the Board was brought to their attention of such action that was going to take place. So in what deliberative body do you not consult with the entire Board when it comes to making such a determination that you wish to remove a standing Officer, Chair, or Vice Chair from their committee position?
As our policies state, the Chair is able to, the Chair of the Board is, has the authority and ability to name the Chairs and Vice Chairs of Committees. Absent the express policy that says what, that speaks to how that a removal process is, that authority is also granted to the Chair of the Board. We don't deliberate in public on who is, on members of each committee or their Chairs or Vice Chairs. So in my view, and after speaking with legal counsel before the decision, my decision was made, it was, it was clear to me that I had the legal authority to do what I did. And at this time, I know that Regent Goodman and Vice Chair Downs would like to speak. I want to open it up to any others who made this request for this to be on the agenda to speak first really quickly before we move to other regions. Thank you.
Point of order. I have not concluded. As I was saying, submitted by Regent Donald Silvante McMichael Sr., member of the Nevada System of Higher Education Board. Background: On June 20, 2024, a letter was issued to Regent McMichael. Donald Silvante McMichael Sr. was dismissed from my position on the Idea Committee. Concerns have been raised regarding the process and the adherence to the open meetings law, as well as the application of Roberts Rules of Order in parliamentary procedures. Proposal: It is proposed that the Board of Regents reconsider the dismissal of Regent Donald Silvante McMichael Sr. from the Idea Committee. This agenda item seeks to review the circumstances and procedures leading to the dismissal. Access compliance with the open meeting law and Roberts Rules of Order. Discuss the potential reinstatement of Regent Donald Silvante McMichael Sr. to the position of the Idea Committee. Action requested: The Board of Regents is requested to review and discuss the dismissal process. Vote on the rescission of the dismissal letter issued to Regent Donald Silvante McMichael Sr. If rescinded, reinstate Regent Donald Silvante McMichael Sr. to his position on the Idea Committee. Does that sound like the Agenda Item Number Seven? I conclude that it doesn't. Now, it was rewritten in order to be on the Agenda Item, because I was fearful that whatever revision that I would make would not make the cut as far as the Agenda Item, that the ultimate authority for approving any Agenda Item lies with the Chair. So I made a revision to that Agenda Item where I stated title: To Discuss and Recision of the Dismissal Letter Issued to Regent Donald Silvante McMichael Sr. from the Inclusion, Diversity, and Access Idea Committee. Submit, I'll skip over that I submitted it. I will go down to the sections that were then removed in order for it to become an information-only item. I was told that I could not make this an action item, even though three Regents brought forth that they wanted to bring this Agenda Item. What is removed is review and discuss the dismissal process. And that's the only item that survived. So we can continue to discuss Agenda Item Seven. And I would like to make note that, again, under the, excuse me, under Title I, Article Five, Section Seven, it states that agendas of regular meetings shall be approved by the Chair and distributed to all members of the Board. This is a special meeting, so that Agenda Item should not have been changed. It should have stayed as an action item.
Well, just to respond to that quickly, some of those items, I believe, were in, were not in alignment with our policies, and that's why there were changes made. Not because I've made them, but because our legal department felt that it was important to have it align with our policies as they are today. I'll go to Regent Boylan, and then Regent DelCarlo, then Regent Goodman, Vice Chair Downs, and then Regent Cruz Crawford. I know we've got a long, we've got a long queue of people who would like to speak.
Point of order. You just indicated that counsel suggested that certain items could not be brought forward in this Agenda Item. Counsel, what were those items, and why weren't they able to meet the standard?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, the advice was regarding your request for an action that the Board did not have authority to make. So when the Chair has authority to appoint and remove an officer, it would be a violation of the bylaws to put something on an agenda to have the full Board vote on the appointment or removal of an officer.
So we're using the determination in Roberts Rule of Order that you're indicating that because the Standing Committee Officers, Chair, and Vice Chair do not serve a fixed term, is that your assumption?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, to stay consistent with legal advice, we were given consistent legal advice on both matters, and advise that any Agenda Item that goes forward to the Board be an Agenda Item that the Board has legal authority to act upon.
So in your opinion, the only authority that can make the final decision is the Chair on whether an Agenda Item comes forward, even if it's presented by three Regents?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, if there's an Agenda Item that is requested, and this has happened with other Regents as well, I know, you know, Regent Goodman, from the top of my mind, had a new business request not too long ago that we discussed, and it would have violated the bylaws to move forward. Our advice was to not move forward with an Agenda Item that, if the Board took action, would violate the bylaws.
But in that decision-making, you still didn't identify what items in my revised Agenda Request that still did not meet the requirement. Would you like to look over the requested Agenda Item?
And Regent McMichael, I hate to jump in again from an open meeting law standpoint, but we still have an obligation to stick what was posted on the Agenda. And currently, we're on number seven, discussion of the removal of Regent Donald Silvesti McMichael Sr. from the Idea Committee. So I urge you to stick to that topic. Again, we have a related topic when it comes to procedure on number eight, but again, I that's, can't encourage you enough to stick to, within the goalpost of Agenda Item Number Seven. Thank you.
Okay, well, I will continue with our discussion as to why Regent McMichael was singled out amongst other members of the Board for such extradition proceedings to remove him, myself, from my committee position, when there are no grounds to base that decision on. I didn't murder anyone. I did not commit kidnapping, fraud, something so serious. But when it comes to free speech, we do not punish individuals for their free speech unless it violates the law, like shouting "fire" in a crowded theater when there is no fire. So what basis did the Chair make her decision? And I would like to know, did those grounds meet such a measure to remove one from a committee position?
To move this along, I'm going to go to Regent Boylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Regent McMichael. Just a quick question and a comment. I heard Counsel Nielsen say that what he was trying to present for Regent McMichael was the original request by the three Regents that was changed, and that is part of the discussion. So I don't think he is not sticking to the Agenda Item, and neither are we. And I don't think that scares any of us to say that you're going against the open meeting law, because it is part of the discussion. And he's asking, why did this happen? This was the original request, the original Agenda Item, and it was changed, and he's discussing it and saying, by whom and why? That's all he was saying. It's not breaking the open meeting law, going against it. It's a discussion, right?
Yeah, thank you, Regent Boylan. I didn't suggest he was breaking it. I just reminded, as I've reminded others at times, that's why you pay me, is to give you advice. You guys make the decisions, and I was just advising that, just a gentle reminder what the posted Agenda Item is.
Okay, so what you were saying is, be careful. But discussing it and saying this was the original one was, okay, I get it. So you're just saying, be careful, watch out. All right, thank you.
Regent DelCarlo.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. And I know you've asked several times if anybody wanted to address this, that had put their name to this. And I would say that I don't put my name to things lightly. And I was the Chair Pro Tem back in 2019, and it was the first time this Board had ever used that option. I don't, I can't quote it, where three Regents come together and basically ask, quote, demand something be on a agenda. And you were, are my, we, together, you were the Vice Chair Pro Tem. So, and I did talk So, and I did talk to our chief of staff, who was our different title at the time. But she advised me that in her 17 years being on the board, this had never happened before. So, you know, this was, and it's, I never even knew it was in our stuff. But that said, a lot of things happened at that meeting. And, you know, we had four hours of public comment, and there was just so much that went on. I think I looked at this from what my colleague, Regent Boylan, said. Free speech, for sure. I mean, who has the right to? We don't always like what people say, but they do have the right to say it. So I looked at it that way. And I also looked at it that I had received many calls from Regent McMichael, and I knew he was really bothered by this, deeply, deeply troubled by it. And I just didn't think we'd ever be able to go forward if we didn't, we can't get together and violate open-meeting laws and have these discussions. So we have to do this in public. So I was willing to put my name out there so we could hopefully get this resolved. I don't know if it's going to be satisfactorily to what, well, while there's no action item today, but, you know, maybe in the next item, we will do some things going forward. But it just, it needs to be talked about in public, and we need to just be able to find our resolutions and move on. I had many questions at the time. I wondered, what did the idea committee chair feel? How did she feel about it? Did she know this was going to happen? Not know that this was going to happen. I mean, there were just so many unknowns. And, you know, you don't move forward without a healthy discussion. So I just looked at it this way, as just, let's just have a discussion. And if we need to change things as a board, we will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Goodman.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say that I support the chair in what she did. And legal backed up what she did. The facts are is that she made a decision based on legal counsel. And that's good enough for me. As the chair, she has that right. Regent McMichael, with all due respect, I feel like I'm watching an episode of, I'm not a lawyer, but I play one on TV. And the legal team is here. The legal team has told you what the opinion is. And for me, that's enough. But let's just go back to why you were removed, okay? I mean, the fact of the matter is, you told people to get in line. And as a vice chair of a committee that's supposed to propagate equity and access and inclusion, you, in fact, determined that one group of people were less worthy of support from this board than another group of people. And when you said, "Get in line," as a woman, excuse me, I'm still talking, sir.
Point of order.
As a woman, excuse me.
You're misquoting.
Anyway.
I said, "Get a ticket and get in line."
Oh, "get a ticket and get in line." I'm sorry.
Someone has to start the line.
I understand. I understand. So what I'm saying, sir, is that what you said was wrong. As a woman, women have been marginalized. We were the last people in this country to vote. And the fact of the matter is, I'm not crying about that. I'm looking at our students. I'm saying that our students don't feel safe. It doesn't matter if they're Latino, if they're black, if they're Jewish, if they're Asian. I don't care. The fact of the matter is, we had students who did not feel safe, and we took the right action. As vice chair, sir, it was very irresponsible of you to say something like that. So I support our chair, and I support this board. And I just want you to know on the record, that's where I stand.
May I answer?
Thank you. I'm going to go to Vice Chair Downs now.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. So at this point, I wanted to, it feels like I might be out of place, but reference Robert's Rule 6216, as you brought up, and ask the question of, or as Regent McMichael brought up, but ask the question of legal counsel through you about the nature of the statement, if it's even appropriate. Because this refers to people being elected to a permanent society, not people put on a temporary committee. So I don't know if they have a chance to review that in real time. I do respect and appreciate the counsel that we've been given so far. But when new information is brought up like this, it's kind of throws a, it's just question, I think we can quash that whole line of argument right now because I don't even think it applies. And I don't play a lawyer on TV or in person, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Cruz Crawford.
Thank you, Chair. Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record. Since we are discussing item number seven, the removal of Regent McMichael, I'd like to share some additional things as the chair of the idea committee. I am not an expert here. I really strive, as the chair of the idea committee, to seek first to understand and to protect all populations. I feel like with every single board meeting, I am learning more about how we govern. And the timeline that I would like to share is from my perspective as the idea committee chair. We have two idea kind of governing bodies. We have our board idea committee. And then we also have an idea council, which is made out of the chief diversity officers for each campus and their co-officers. And I really use them as subject matter experts because their feet are on the ground, just like I go to my teachers as a school principal, to really tell me the polls. And so with that, first, as the chair of the idea committee, I heard on 6/20 the letter sent out to the board of regents. And that was my first knowledge of the removal of Regent, of Regent McMichael. Next, I really took a week to digest because I had a really hard time with the comments that Regent McMichael made. And I wanted to make sure that I was really supporting our Jewish students. So I did send, you know, my thoughts to our board officers, really discussing that I condemn all the anti-Semitic statements and how, as the idea chair, it's important that I advocate for all groups. I then shared my concerns. Number one, I actually do really agree with Regent Boylan. I don't accept those statements, but I am concerned about freedom of speech. And so I stated that Regent Boylan and Regent McMichael both made harmful comments, but only one member was removed of duties. I also said that setting precedent by removing one regent of duties is a dangerous practice as it undermined the LGBTQAI+ community by not taking action against Regent Boylan's comments. But it did have the appearance of disciplining a black man and not a white man. And then I said that I do not believe that this was intentional by the board, as we are all learning. But I did want to share this as it was brought up as a concern by the idea council. The condemning of anti-Semitic behavior by removing McMichael supported our Jewish students. Did the actions advocate for Black and LGBTQAI+ students by not removing Regent Boylan? I'm concerned about that discrepancy. Number three, Title 4, Chapter 1, Section 38 prohibits the removal of regents from duties under the freedom of expression. And lastly, I understand as a board, there's a lot of pressures that our chair and vice chair are privy to and a lot of information that I'm not privy to. And every day, I'm trying to learn and understand within my zone of duties. On our campuses, we have a lot of diverse students and staff and presidents. They're affected by discrimination, both implicitly and aggressively. And they rely on us as a board to protect them. I would like conversations in regard to the idea committee be run through the idea council, as they are subject matter experts, to at least get input, as I know we are the governing body, and they cannot do that. I am also adding that with Section 7's suspension bylaws, any provisions of the bylaws may be suspended in connection with consideration of a matter before the board by an affirmative vote and no fewer than nine members of the board. Any item can be discussed as an action item, and we can vote and move on. So that's my understanding. I understand I'm not a lawyer. As I shared that concern with our chair and vice chair, I then shared with the idea council, remember, that's the chief diversity officers with on campuses, that today's Agenda Items 7 and 8 would be discussing an idea committee issue. As soon as I shared that item, I was asked by the council secretary if I would like to add it as an agenda item. And I said, sure. I was then told that discussing today's item, after it's already discussed today by the idea council, would need the chair, the vice chair, and the attorney be present. And I believe that is a big overstep. So I just wanted to share my timeline and pieces as we are discussing the removal of Regent McMichael. And hopefully, that puts together some clarity on everybody else's side from my point of view. I'm sure we all have pieces of the puzzle, so that was mine as the idea chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent Ariscotta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I put a lot of thought into this. And after reviewing this item and reading the supplemental material, I fondly recalled, I fondly recalled a statement from a previous meeting. It was a significantly poignant statement fitting to today's conversation. So I reviewed the meeting archive on the NCHU website, and I located the comment during the second day of the Board of Regents' quarterly meeting on March 4, 2022. Specifically, in our meeting archive, it's identified on page 44. And it was item number 37, as an information-only item regarding anti-discrimination. The statement, "Words matter, and what the board does or fails to do as a body reflects who we are, who they are." And this statement was made by Regent Carol DelCarlo. And it was poignant, and it was well-stated. And in the specific situations, in the specific situation, words do matter. The words that were spoken do matter. As a representative of a marginalized class and is underrepresented on all the campuses, there's no reason for anybody to wait in line. I know what it's like. None of us should wait in line. None of us have waited in line. This board, this NCHU, this system focuses on students, focuses on faculty and staff. Color, race, religion, disability are irrelevant. In this situation in particular, words mattered. We're an elected body. We must represent our constituents, what we are elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to Regent Brooks, I'm just going to go to Chancellor Charlton to make a clarification to Regent Cruz Crawford's comments.
Certainly. Thank you for the record, Patty Charlton, interim chancellor. I just wanted to make the point of clarification. Regent Cruz Crawford, yesterday, when you did send out the material to the idea council, which is an advisory council, as you indicated, to the chancellor and also to the idea committee, referencing that this item was going to be here today and then asking for it to be on the idea council's committee meeting next week, or the idea council's meeting next week, I just suggested that since we were having this conversation, that it was at my recommendation that the chair, the vice chair, and/or legal be in attendance because this was basically to discuss what was happening here today, which included their actions at that time. So it was my recommendation that if it was going to be on the idea council, which is the advisory, is that we would have all parties be present.
Thank you. I'll go to Regent Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. You know, there's just an awful lot to unpack here in terms of things that were said. In my opinion, not only do I believe the chair made the correct decision in terms of removing you as the vice chair of the idea committee, which, I mean, really is charged with being inclusive of all students. And in my opinion, the statements you made certainly were not. I actually believe the chair should have removed you from the committee entirely. It's just my opinion. The letter that the chair pushed out on June 20, the way I understood it, is that you were being removed from the committee. And then later on, there was a clarifying statement that you were just being removed from the vice chair position. I'm not sure, really, what your thought process is here because the statements that you made were difficult to swallow as a regent, let alone the students that have been dealing with horrible situations on our campuses. You know, it's the chair's purview to certainly have various conversations within the system office and then execute things based on what the chair believes is the best process for the board. It's something that's been going on long before our current chair is in play, long before I was chair. There are just some experiences that you have as chair where there are so many things being fired at you because you are the chair that it's normal for conversations to take place on a daily basis. And not all of them come to light because there's so much stuff going on. I got to tell you, I'm appalled and disheartened by your remarks. It was, your remarks were filled with anti-Semitic tropes and a disturbing, you minimized the Holocaust at a time when the Holocaust shouldn't have been minimized. There is no time for that. But gosh, during everything that happened with Israel and Jewish community members were coming out saying, "We've never seen anything like this except for the Holocaust." And for whatever reason, when you were making your statements, you thought it would be appropriate to minimize that. Your rhetoric was not only factually incorrect, but you helped perpetuate stereotypes. And that in itself is harmful. There is no place in our societies anywhere for anti-Semitism to exist, let alone on our campuses, which it has since October of last year. The remarks shouldn't have been made from somebody in your position as somebody who should be answering to constituents and others. They just shouldn't have been. I think when you just diminish or minimize the Holocaust, at the same time, you are disrespecting the memories of those who are survivors. So I'll tell you, just the way I feel about this is that I unequivocally condemn those statements that you made. I think you should be having some retrospective thoughts to put yourself in a position where maybe you, rather than demonstrating this, I'm going to say, willful ignorance to things that are happening to our students and around us, take a look at some of that. And rather than double down on what you said, Take a look at some of that and rather than double down on what you said and waste, I'll tell you, I feel like you're wasting my time as a regent and I'm confident you wasted council's time and other members of this body's time in terms of the amount of work that needed to be put in place for this agenda item to come forward to begin with. Rather than putting yourself in a position where you, where you're retracting some of these things, again, you're, 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 you're double downing on the things that you said. You should be, in my opinion, apologizing for the things that you said, not creating more of a ruckus. I'll just reinstate what I've been reinstating for the last couple of years when it comes to Jewish students in our state. And that's, I, I, I will continue to reaffirm my commitment to support them and speak up when they are too afraid to speak up. I will continue to educate others as best I can on the Holocaust, the fighting antisemitism, the atrocities of the October 6 attacks. And, and I hope to have conversations regarding these particular areas that certainly are promoting values of tolerance, respect and human dignity above all. Chair, I appreciate your, the time and indulgence.
Thank you, Regent Brooks. Next I'll go to Regent Breger.
Point of order. At some point I need to address some of these comments and I don't think I need to wait for.
I'm, I'm going to Regent Breger next. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Susan Breger for the record. You know, we've heard a lot today and mostly what we've heard is that comments that were made were, and I feel this way, I, and I have never said this in a meeting, but I'm only a second generation American because probably 99% of my family was killed in the Holocaust. I think it's sad that we've had about an hour discussion on arguing with legal. And I think that's unnecessary. I think we have to agree to disagree sometimes, but I respect legal in my 26 years of public service. They have never led me astray. They have answered questions by legally of what they believe in and what they've learned and all their law abilities. And at some point, this discussion has to end. There's no way to make a motion because it's not a motion. There's no way to, to do anything. But I think that when we are leaders, our person, that freedom of speech is one thing, but saying things that in a leadership position, I really, I've been tried to be quiet this whole time and even in the last meetings, but I, I think that it, it needs to end. We, some of us feel different than unfortunately, Mr. McMichael, how you feel. I respect your freedom of speech. I don't respect that it got to when you said the ticket. I didn't hear the ticket part, but I'll give you that. Get in line, I thought, and I'm going to say this as an older female, I've been in line for a long time. It's amazing that I sit in this seat or that I sat on the county commission or the school board because in years past, it did not happen or have the job that I have. And so I, I'm, I'm not meaning it at you. I mean it for all of us. There should be a learning, a learning situation that we all learn from, but we have to move on and we need to be at the adult table and we just need to get to the next agenda item. I'm not saying you can't, I cannot say whether you can speak or not, but I think we need to discuss anything in the future. I do support the chair. Been chair like six, seven times in my 26 years. And sometimes you make some really rough decisions, but we all have to move forward from something at some point in time. My disappointment, my sadness for what I know happened to my family, that just cut to the quick when that was said. And I respect that there's been many things happen through the hundreds of years of our country, but we were talking about one particular entity at that time. And I think it got carried away on some regions' aspect. Thank you for the time, Chair.
Thank you. Regent McMichael, I will give you three more minutes. I, I think we've given enough time to this item. It, it was a 30 minute item. I believe you've had the most time of anyone and, and I'll allow you to close with three minutes. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm amazed that people only want to take certain things out of someone's speech and run with it as though that's the only thing they said. I made comments about the Holocaust. And what was demeaning about the comments that I made? I acknowledged the Holocaust. I wish it had never happened and I hate those individuals who put people through such torturous events in our history. What was that comment that I made that was demeaning in reference to the Holocaust? Does anybody remember? The only thing I said was I acknowledge the Holocaust. I guess just saying the Holocaust is enough to trigger people to believe that anything after that is meaningless. Just the mention of Holocaust or saying that, yeah, I think this guy is antisemitic even though, you know, I really don't have any hard evidence to prove that. These things are fostering hardship in people's beliefs. And I would also like to indicate if I'm considered being very hard on the speech that I made, there was never any intent to harm anyone. And I've made that statement at least twice in different meetings. Now, I believe that people want to take out of speech what they want and they want to use that against someone. So be it. That's their prerogative. But I made no statement against the sufferings of people that endured the Holocaust. And my statement, take a ticket and get in line, that's a normal saying that I use to indicate that that's what we do every day. We take a ticket to go to the DMV and we get in line. We're not going to go into the DMV and just bum our way up to the front and say, here I am, here I am. I don't wait for people. I think I deserve to be here ahead of everybody else. I believe that we take a ticket and we get in line. And we, as a body, would determine where does the line begin? And who would have the, I guess, the, the most hurtful people in society that we can then say, well, Native Americans, I might consider being first, African Americans, second, maybe Jewish Americans, third or fourth or wherever we decide.
We're going to move on to the next item now. Thank you.
Point of order. I have one more statement to make.
I'm sorry. I've, I've given you enough time and I think it's time to move on to the next item. Thank you.
Point of order.
Item number eight, discuss, discussion of the process for the appointment and removal of officers of standing committees of the board. For this item, this was requested by Regents McMichael, Boylan, Del Carlo and Perkins pursuant to bylaws of the Board of Regents Title I, Article 5, Section 7. This item will provide the Board of Regents an opportunity to review and discuss the process for the appointment and removal of standing committee officers pursuant to bylaws of the Board of Regents Title I, Article 6, Section 2, which states that the members of the standing committee, its chair and vice chair, shall be appointed by the chair of the board. As a result of this discussion, the board may request staff to draft a revision to Title I, Article 6, Section 2 of the bylaws for consideration by the board at a future meeting. So first I will open the floor to those who have requested this item if they'd like to start this discussion. Regent Boylan, please.
Thank you, Chair. This all comes about from the fact that we don't have anything that says that the chair can remove. We have it that the chair can appoint and we talked about that. So in Robert's Rules of Orders, I, I don't know the numbers. I think Jimmy knows them and Regent McMichael knows them. The process now is concerning. We've got to stick to our rules and regulations. We have a process. That process was not stuck to, was stuck to, yeah. So that's what my main concern was. It shouldn't be that someone has the authority willy nilly to say, look, I appoint you and I get rid of you because I don't like you. We are a board. We are run by processes and by rules and regulations. So I didn't know that process myself. But that is in the Robert's Rules of Orders, but I looked at it from the board bylaws. Nowhere does it say that the chair can remove anybody from a subcommittee officer position. And I've heard this argument, but if it says that the person can appoint someone, the same, the chair can also unappoint someone. If that's the case, we have a process, a process that in our bylaws of looking for and appointing presidents. And then we have a process that also tells us how to get rid of them. So it's not just, well, because it says you can appoint them, we can just get rid of them as we please. And that is my whole questioning of this. I know the council has said, well, it says that the person can appoint them, therefore can, no. I just can't agree with that. So we need to put these processes in our own bylaws, like it says here, that we should have a further meeting on this. And that's what concerns me. Now, whether you knew this process, because I like, I'll admit, I did not know this was in Robert's Rules of Order. Regent McMichael brought that to me and I read it. So we have to consider these kinds of things. It's, it's not that, oh, we didn't know about it. I think in court, it even says, there's no excuse for not knowing the law. So we did not know this one in Robert's Rules of Order. So from that point, I cannot support you from removing anybody because you didn't go by the process. Does that make sense? Does that make a valid point there?
You're asking me that?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I 100% agree with you that we need to review this, this whole process so that we're not in the position we're in right now.
Exactly.
That expressly gives a, a chair the ability to remove in certain circumstances.
Right. So there is a process in Robert's Rules of Orders that was not followed. It's not in our bylaws or in the NRS or anything like that. So then do we say, oh, we didn't know about it?
I don't think that that's what has been said. I, I think because there, it, it is silent in our bylaws. It, our legal team advised me that in, in the specific instance that we just spoke about, that we have to refer to Robert's Rules. And there is a, a section in Robert's Rules that does speak to this, that a, and now I'm quoting something that I shouldn't be because I don't have it directly in front of me, but, but not verbatim here, but paraphrasing that a, a, a chair acting in their capacity as a chair who is able to appoint also has the ability to remove. And that's what our legal folks used as, as a defense for that process. But I agree that moving forward for future consideration for our entire board, there needs to be an express policy that, 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 that defines how a, an officer of a committee, a vice chair and chair can possibly be removed if there are a, if there are circumstances that, that deem that necessary.
Thank you, Chair. And this is the whole idea is that we don't end up like this in the future. So we need to know why legal did not know that, that it, what's in Robert's Rules of Order. That's why we have legal and like the young man said, you pay me the big bucks for that. They should have known this stuff to say, but in Robert's Rules of Order, this is the process.
I believe they did, they, they did know and they gave me advice.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, and then Regent McMichael had, in, in this specific instance, had questioned that advice. And I believe all three attorneys at the time had weighed in on it and, and then they asked as well, there, the, the question was asked as well for the parliamentarian to weigh in.
I see. So they, they did give you advice that this is in Robert's Rules of Orders, but you still went through and said, I'm removing him because, right?
I followed, I followed Robert's Rules.
I know. Yeah. So you followed Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules says that you have to bring it to the board.
No.
The whole process.
No, that is not the, that is not the section that was, was used as defense.
I might be able to, I might be able to help explain. Jimmy Martinez for the record. And this is not a new interpretation by any means. When, when Regent Brooks was chair, I provided him with the exact same interpretation. What it says is our current bylaws set forth that the chair of the board appoints the members of standing committees and also the officers. It then says the members of the standing committee serve for a term of one year. That's all it says on the matter. So for any supplemental rules for parliamentary procedure of this board, our bylaws say, if we don't address it, you have to go to Robert's Rules. So when you go to Robert's Rules of Order, they state that, in short, because a member of a standing committee is appointed for a period of one year, they have to be removed by the entire board. Because an officer of the board with those very specific duties as an officer of a standing committee to call the meetings and do those duties, those very specific administrative duties that only exist for the chair and vice chair of that standing committee, those administrative duties do not have a set term of office with them. So the chair does have authority under Robert's Rules of Order to remove those administrative duties from individuals without coming to the full board. Now, that's what we're here to talk about today is under this item, if this board wishes to set either more clear or address all of these provisions in the bylaws, that's what this conversation is supposed to be and staff will take the considerations of the board in this discussion back and bring, and bring forward another agenda item for the board to consider a bylaw revision.
Point of order.
Madam Chair, oh.
Where is that written or stated?
That, that was my question actually. Where is that written that this applies to the officers and this applies to the members of the committee? If you could state that for us, that's why we are here, to discuss it, to bring it out in the open and we don't go through this again. So where, where would you say that is?
It's, it's stated in the bylaws.
Where? Which, which number? Give us the number and please, I, I, and read it out to us because I've heard a few times from legal say, it's stated in the bylaws and we never hear it. And when I go to those bylaws, I look through the whole thing. It happened at the last meeting, I think. And I didn't find it, but if, if you find it.
I will point that right now. If you go to Board of Regents bylaws, Article 6, Section 2, it says the members of a standing committee shall serve terms of one year.
Yes, sir.
The members of the standing committee. Now, you're talking about members, all, if there's, if there's six people on a standing committee, every one of those six members, their term as a member is one year. The same section also says the members of a standing committee, its chair and vice chair shall be appointed by the chair from and among the members of the board. The chair appoints the members. Separately, the, the chair appoints the chair of the standing committee and the vice chair of the standing committee. Three different capacities.
You're right.
The bylaws only set the one year term for one specific capacity and that's the capacity for membership, which is the same for all of those members regardless of their administrative duties as chair or vice chair. So it is silent as to the terms of chair or vice chair, which we call officers. So when you go to the chair or vice chair, it's silent on the terms. That's when you have to go to Robert's Rules.
Robert's Rules of Order, right. And that's my question. So why didn't we know this or was? So why didn't we know this or was the chair not given this advice that you cannot do it? Please go and look at Robert's Rules of Orders, number 16, blah, 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 says you have to bring it. So, but the chair says that she took...
Section 6213 of Robert's Rules of Order that says the full board has to take action to remove a member only applies to the, the removal as a member, not... Remember, I said, there's three different capacities. There's the capacity as a member, there's the capacity as a chair, capacity as vice chair. Those two are administrative duties. If you're not chair, you're still a member. If you're not vice chair, you're still a member.
Right, yeah.
That can change. What cannot change is your term as a member.
Okay. Now, and then we'll be splitting hair here and like, uh, the young lady here said, "I'm not a lawyer, but I played one on TV." I think I did, I'm not sure, but, and I might go back to law school now because you guys have really got me interested. Because now, now you're really splitting hair and now who is a member and who isn't a member? We are all members, but it only applies to members and it doesn't apply to officers because that suits the paradigm that we are all pushing right now. The chair can remove the members, uh, you can remove the officers but cannot remove the members from the committee? You just said that it's one-year term for members and the chair and vice chair are members. So it's a one-year term. Nowhere does it say that, that the chair of the board can remove a, uh, a person from a committee, uh, officer position. And that's, I think, the whole thing that we're trying to get to is what Mr. McMichael has an issue with. I have an issue with also. And I, that's what I'm trying to clear with the chair is, if you took the counsel's advice, why didn't the counsel know this and tell you this? That it's not in our bylaws, but it's in Robert's Rules of Orders. So by Robert's Rules of Orders, you have to bring it to the whole committee? To the whole, uh, 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 board?
That, Jimmy Martinez, for the record, that is not the advice.
You didn't give that advice. That's what I'm trying to get at.
The advice, the advice was consistent the entire time and the chair followed the advice that was provided the entire time.
So what was the advice then? That's what I'm interested in.
The advice was what I just explained, that there is a member and there are officers. Okay? If you have five members on a committee, all five are members. The chair also appoints officers who have separate administrative duties from the rest of those individuals. All five of them are still members regardless who is the officers. And those officers can change over time.
Yeah.
So all five of them have a one-year term. The officers do not. The officers can change, but they're all members. You know, you could be the officer one day, Regent Brooks could be the officer the next day. It depends, the chair has authority to change the administrative duties within the membership of that body. But the chair does not have authority to unilaterally change the membership of that body before the one-year term is up.
Okay.
That is the advice that was given and that's the advice that was followed.
I, I get, I get what you're saying now.
I'm still confused.
And Dr. Grinwald isn't here?
I'm still confused.
Go ahead.
My confusion is...
Excuse me, I have some others in the, in the queue on this. Um, I, next I will go to, uh, Regent Cruz Crawford.
Thank you so much, Chair, Regent Cruz Crawford.
Madam Chair, I didn't finish, if you don't mind. I was talking, I didn't finish with, with counsel. So, counsel, I, I'd like to speak to you later, maybe, hopefully.
Absolutely.
And you can explain that to me and then bring it to the board because I'm a simple man. You've got to tell me things simply. When you say so and so member is not a member and his chair is not a chair, that really confuses me.
And, and Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I, I, I don't blame anybody for not understanding it. You're not trained attorneys.
No.
But that's why we're here. We are here to give you the correct advice and you have safe harbors and immunities for following legal advice.
And, and, and that's why I, I love you, uh, Jimmy. And I'm going to go back to law school. Where's Dr. Grinwald? I hope she gets me into law. That's it. I don't care if I'm the oldest or the youngest student there, but this has made me really interested. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Apologies, Regent Cruz Crawford, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, Regent Cruz Crawford, for the record. I'm gonna try to close this up. Um, I don't think any of this was done with any ill intention on either side. I think it just...
No, it wasn't.
They're just different, different, um, views of what, um, what, what we do. So, and how we interpret that. So I know this isn't information only, but I would like to put in our request that we revisit Title One, Article Six, Section Three for the removal of, um, removal of committee officers by vote, majority vote of the board. And so that way it would just be very, very solid, um, and not up to interpretation in the future. And, um, I think it's fair. I think you did a fabulous job selecting the committee members. Um, but I would hate for someone to have too much power of being able to select and remove. And I think it just balances, um, the power. I think it's fair and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'll go to Regent DelCarlo.
Okay, Chair, uh, thank you, Chair Gravola, because you had asked for members that had put their name to this. And I agree that we, we as a body need to look at Title One, Article Six, Section Two because our seal up there on the wall says 1865. And is it really that many, 159 years that this has not come up? It, it's hard to believe that nobody's ever been removed as a chair or vice chair from anything. So I think it would be great to have our legal team come back and bring us a couple ways to go with this. I would like to see possibly, you know, it's open for debate, if, whether it's just solely the chair and it's not anything directed to you. You've done a beautiful job, but, um, anybody that is chair.
Yes.
And, um, maybe some of the body needs to be able to have a say in it too. So, thank you. Because it's more a negative thing to remove. It's not a negative thing to appoint unless you don't want to do something. Right? But it is negative to the person to be removed. Thank you.
True.
Thank, thank you. I agree with that and, um, and I am very much in favor of reviewing this policy so that we have a clear direction moving forward for, for all. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this item? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. McMichael.
That's okay.
Regent Brooks.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Chair. So, um, I had put my hand up earlier o- only because I was hoping to just jump in and allow this conversation between Regent Boylan and, and counsel to be sped up or just moved forward to another time um, outside of this meeting so that we're not wasting board members' times going back and forth on this stuff. The, the idea of something coming to the full body where the chair is having the consideration to remove somebody in a standing committee in terms of their officer position, that's going to be tough to navigate. And the, the, the only thing that I could think of was that, look, as, as, as the chair, when you're putting these committees together, not only are you reaching out to regents and asking them, "Would you like to be part of this committee?" Or "What committees would you like to be a part of?" But there may be some consultation that you're doing with the, with the vice chair as well. And that there's collaboration in the work that's being done to put the committees together and have some agreement about who should be the chair and vice chair. When something comes up that's so egregious where, as the chair, a decision has to be made to remove somebody from, uh, uh, an officer position with inside a committee, that, that usually comes forward because there are so many things that are going on in conversations, actions, telephone calls between perhaps that person and other members of the system office or other, other variables. And some of those are unknown to board members only because there's, there, there isn't that, that line of, here's everything that's going on because it's, it's so much. At least that was my experience and I certainly don't want to speak for Regent Ariscata, but I would, I would, I would imagine he would a- agree with me that as, as officers during our time, there was a lot of things that were happening. I, I don't know how, what, and certainly it should be up for some discussion, but perhaps that discussion should really revolve around, is it done with the chair in consultation with the vice chair? Or is it just strictly the chair? Um, and, and that would be my, my, my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. That, that's a, a very good perspective on this as well. And I think that it gives our, our, um, legal team some, some, uh, fruitful, um, dialogue to bring back to us, um, because these are, these, some of the suggestions are very, very different. So I, I really do appreciate the perspectives. I will see if...
He had his hand up first and then me.
Okay. I will go to Regent McMichael and then to Regent Boylan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, um, I made a statement, uh, in one of our, um, uh, committees uh, in regards to why we don't have a review, uh, committee or even an appeals committee when it comes to things like this. Like it was said, that we've been on, uh, INCI has been in existence for well over 100 years. And you're telling me that no one has ever attempted to remove someone from their position? But maybe I'm mistaken, but I've looked back as far as I can. And the reason why this has never occurred or happened is just this reason. This delivered to body, each individual has their own mind as to how we should proceed. And if one individual feels that they've been harmed, you know, not physically, but seeks to regress their, uh, grievance and has been met with delays and, uh, materials not arriving that have been asked for in a formal written request, why do we even have to sit here for well over a couple of hours discussing such things that if in hindsight, this could have been easily avoided by simply allowing McMichael to run out his term at the end of June and not reappointing? We wouldn't be here today. It was simple as that.
Thank you. Regent Boylan.
Thanks, Chair. I appreciate that. I had something smart to say to that regent that's running away. That's why he knew I was going to say something to him, so he's run away, but no. I think what, uh, what Mr. McMichael, uh, Regent McMichael has just said, it goes back to what, uh, Ca- uh, Regent DelCarlo always says, the, the need for a governance committee. And this comes down to that and it's something that she's been saying since I've been on the board and got a bit annoying, but no, she was right about it. So maybe that's something that you can think about, uh, we can, just to help this board so we don't go through these same things again so that we can question, "Why is this happening?" And let's make a change. So, uh, Regent DelCarlo, Governance Committee, ma'am. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I don't want to cross open meeting law, laws at all. I, I do want you to know that in, in terms of this, um, uh, removal of, of the standing committee, I appreciate your, um, your reminder about the governance committee. That is something that, that I think goes hand in hand with this, um, with the, the revision of this. Um, and we have talked, uh, frequently about bringing this forward. The problem is, is that right now because of the, well, there, there are a few reasons why it hasn't come forward yet. And maybe because of this, we'll, we'll move that forward more, more quickly. Sometimes it's just a matter of, of, uh, enough people doing, doing the work behind the scenes. But I, I, I do want you, Regent DelCarlo and, and Regent Boylan to know that this is something that is important to me as well. And I think that, that perhaps it's time to revisit it again to try to move it forward more quickly. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. With that, I will move on to item number nine, new business. Yes. Uh, Regent DelCarlo and then Regent Goodman.
Okay, I wrote three things down and I think Regent Goodman's gonna do the first one, so I'll let her do that one. Um, number two, we got some, um, not a lot, but we got enough to be concerning that UNLV has raised their, uh, parking fees. And I thought all fees had to come to the board. So I would respectfully request that we put that on a future agenda item and have UNLV come and tell us why and da, 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 and then take a formal vote. And then I, third item was, it says right here, "Review committees and add a governance committee." So that was on my agenda too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Regent Goodman.
Thank you. Uh, working in conjunction with legal, I would like to propose an agenda item that obligates the INCI system to create policy that states that only biological women are allowed to participate in women's sports.
Thank you. Regent McMichael.
Regent, oh, there's someone else.
Um, I'm making a motion to rescind the removal letter. Come on.
I, I apologize, Regent McMichael, but this is an information-only, uh, agenda item. There's no, there's no action that can be taken.
Uh, excuse me. Uh, this is new business, correct?
It's, it's correct. You are correct that it's new business, but it is information only. And there's actually an Attorney General's opinion right on point uh, that action cannot be taken during, uh, informational items such as new business. I would caution you not to make a motion.
Uh, excuse me, but yes, according to Robert's Rules of Order, I can make this motion in new business. And the Attorney General's, uh, opinion was in regards to a generic, uh, agenda item. This agenda item has already been discussed. Therefore, I'm making the motion to rescind the, uh, removal letters dated June 20th and August 15th.
I second it, but as I second it, I'm going to, uh, say one thing. Can you state where this says that we can make a motion during new business? Because we've been told and silenced every time in new business, "You can't even say more than 10 words and they'll say, 'Whoa, hey, you can't say that.'" So where is this, Mr. McMichael? Where does it say that we can make a motion during new business?
What motions can be made under new business to have this removal letter rescinded? To address the rescission of a removal letter under new business, you can consider the following motion based on Robert's Rules of Order and the specific bylaws of the Nevada System of Higher Education. We have that directive and I'm, uh, asking that this motion go forward.
Chair, if I may just, uh, add to that advice, I'm advising the board now. Uh, under Attorney, uh, General's Opinion 99-03, Agenda Items, uh, which includes items such as President's Reports, Committee Reports, or New Business, it says such items must not listed, must not be listed for possible action. So I advise you not, and, and given that this agenda, uh, is listed as information only, I advise you not to take any sort of action. And this is a reminder, uh, at the end of the day, open, the open, your open meeting law rules are in Chapter 241 of the NRS. That's state law. Uh, we incorporate Robert's Rules by reference to bylaws. So if there's, I'm not saying there is a conflict here, but even if there was a conflict, open meeting law rules govern, so. Um, I don't know, Jimmy, if you have anything else to add, but that's my advice.
Excuse me, I already asked this question to Jimmy because this is not a generic agenda item. That is what the Attorney General was in reference to in the 1999, um, um, action that was sent down. This is not a, a generic agenda item. We have discussed this item and therefore in Robert's Rules of Order, under new business, this motion can be made.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, um, to the board, under open meeting law, every single action item must be properly agendized, noticed to the public and contain a clear and complete statement of the, of the, what's going to be deliberated by the public body and acted upon. The purpose for that is so the public has a fair opportunity to be present and participate in the public process. That's why no new business items may have any action or motion attached to them. You can only ask for a new business item to come to a future board meeting for action or information. Even if it was information only, it wasn't properly agendized on this agenda and therefore would have to go forward to a future meeting. Now, I also reached out to the Attorney General's office earlier today when, when this was going on. going on because I, I had talked to Regent McMichael and I wanted to reach out to them to see what they would say, and they confirmed that no new business can, can have any type of action in it. And it would, it can only go to a future agenda. So our advice to the board was if, if Regent McMichael does insist on making a motion and calling for action in, against legal advice, our recommendation is that this board does not participate that and move forward with the meeting.
Jimmy, I mean, ma'am, if I may ask counsel, are, are you saying that just because it's listed there as information only in public comment, then we cannot have any action just because it's listed there? Or are you just saying that the Attorney General's Office has said, and it is in the NRS, open meeting law? And if it is so, where is it in the open meeting law that says, uh, public comment cannot have a motion, a call for a motion? Nobody can call for a motion?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, I, I can get you all the citations, but what I can tell you is it's multiple things. When you say it's, it's for information only, even if the full agenda item is properly agendized and it says it's for information only, you still can't take action on it.
That's what I was asking.
This is not, this is not even an agendized item for information. This is new business. So if it's completely under new business, the public has absolutely no notification that this was going to come before to the board at all. And under that, it would be entirely inappropriate to even deliberate, let alone take action.
Thank you. Now that makes sense. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Hearing none, I will move to public comment, item number ten. Is there any public comment at GBC?
There is none at this time.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the system office in Reno?
Yes, there is, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
Kent Urban, ERVIN, Nevada Fact Alliance. During the Title Nine discussion today, regents ask out about a virtually non-existent type of Title Nine complaints. We have a hundred thousand students and fifteen thousand employees at NCH. We know there are sexual assaults, sexual harassment, and other power-based violence, real incidents with real victims, yet the concern is who gets to use which restrooms and locker rooms? That's just not a problem. One region asked for data. Yes, policy should be evidence-based, but despite multiple requests from us at NFA, there is no uniform, system-wide statistical reporting on the complaints, investigative outcomes, and final dispositions of Title Nine complaints and all other discrimination, equal opportunity complaints, employee grievances, and student-employee disciplinary actions. Without full reporting, the board cannot identify or correct systematic issues. The NFA regularly hears about deficiencies and how Title Nine and other investigations are handled. Some cases escalate to litigation or media scrutiny, but those are anecdotes, not data. Regents, if you want to show that you, as the constitutional authority, still, over higher education, are capable of both protecting students of any gender and holding the institutions and yourselves accountable, you must at least collect the data. Finally, during Agenda Item Three, I received a text from a member of our transgender community, quote, "Though not unexpected, the line of questioning is vile and disrespectful," end quote. I pause now for a moment of silence for our students and colleagues who have been personally affected by any of today's remarks. Thank you and have a good day.
Seeing no other public comment in Reno, I will see if there's any public comment here in Las Vegas.
I oppose comment.
Regent McMichael. While you're preparing, I'll just ask SES if there's any public comment on the telephone.
There is no discernible comment here.
Thank you.
Regent Donald Savanti-McMichael Senior, M C M I C H A E L. I just have a, I probably won't take two minutes, but I do have to say something. As Regent Ariscata said, words have meaning. And he reiterated that, reiterated that on numerous occasions. I do believe that words have meaning. And I would like to state right now that if my words were hateful, disgusting, and considered anti-Semitic, then, and I was removed from my committee position, what do we do to a regent that makes a threat to the entire board? As Regent Ariscata did during the June seventh meeting under Agenda Item Twenty-Six, where he said he was going to put all of us on blast? That only has one definition, and that's to publicly shame or humiliate someone on the board in order to affect the vote. So if for some reason what I did was so blatantly ridiculous in my First Amendment speech, when someone makes a threat and is brought to the attention of the chair and the chair does nothing, where's the fairness in that? I would think that for someone to make a threat to the entire board, it would automatically require removal from every committee position. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment in Las Vegas, I, before we adjourn, I just want to take the opportunity to wish our students who are return, students and faculty who are returning to campus a relaxing weekend and I hope a start to a great semester. And to all of the, the people in, within our system, I hope you all treat each other with kindness. It takes all of us to create an environment that's welcoming and safe for everyone. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at three oh-two.